Six thirty seven. At the start. I had such rise with pledge of origins.
Item one D, approval of the agenda.
I moved that the agenda for the March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting be approved.
Motion by Mrs. Coleman, support by Mrs. Shaw. Is there any discussion? There not? Mr. Gobleski? Yes. Mrs. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman? Ms. Clayback? Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Ms. Splendio?
Yes.
And myself, and yes, that motion carries. Item one C, approval of the minutes, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I move that the minutes from the February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting be approved.
Motion by Mrs. Coleman, support by Mrs. Clayback, is there discussion? There none? Mr. Gobleski?
No.
Mrs. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Clayback?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Ms. Splendio?
Yes.
And myself, only yes, that motion carries as well. Item one D, superintendent's report. Mr. Hughes?
Hello, everybody. Welcome. A couple of things real quickly in regards to the non-homestead village coming on May second. Just reminder, lots of information out there. Our website is a great source for information as well as community life. Every home in Hartland gets a hard copy of community life. You should be receiving that, the centerfold for March, and again in April, we'll have all the information you need to make an informed decision. Reminder that every public school district, unless they're an out-of-formula district, there are a couple districts that don't have to do it, but most districts have to do a non-homestead village. Again, since nineteen ninety-three, residents in public schools have been paying the non-homestead. If you own a non-homestead property, it's part of the formula to fund the schools. That was just something that happened in nineteen ninety-three in Hartland. We were paying thirty-seven mills just to run the school's operation village. The state legislators proposed and passed Proposition A, which put six mills from every property owner into the state school aid fund plus other components and increased the sales tax by two percent at the time. And this is just something that we have to do. If we don't collect our eighteen mills, it gets subtracted from our student allotment. And so it's something that school districts have to collect as part of their operation village. It's just something that has to be done, and we do this every five years. We did it a few years where we did it a year at a time to try to ensure someone leaned up against the lights over here. Thank you. And so it's just something we have to do, and hopefully the public is educated and goes out and votes on that particular item. It's worth about five million dollars, five point four million dollars a year, every year for five years. So about twenty-five million dollars of our operating budget that the state will not make up if we don't get that in mind. Also want to congratulate our thirty-one-deca students from the high school. We had quite a few participants. Thirty-one-deca students are going to the international competition. Once again, an outstanding number of students that will represent our community at the international conference. And I believe it's in Orlando this year at Disney World, and they're going to have a great time and represent us very well. Many athletic successes. Mr. Wheeler will come back in April and do a presentation on winter athletics. So I'll wait till then for us to congratulate all of our winter participants on this past weekend. In the last couple of weeks, we've seen a lot of success in the state tournaments. And let's see. Lastly, I know that one of the issues out in the community has been safety and security. I've made sure that I put a lot of information out to our public on my update, weekly update. If you have any concerns about what I've published, you can go to our website, www.hartlandschools.us. Go to the bottom under superintendent's update. You'll see my weekly update. That's there for the parents of this community as well as the community in general. You can see what I'm sharing, information I'm sharing, and what we do with safety and security. Also, board, we have invited our newest members, our administrative team have invited our newest members to come and meet with us on the twentieth at four o'clock. And we're going to do that so we can listen to our newest members on any concerns they may have and suggestions that we look at. So we appreciate their willingness to come and meet with us and talk about that issue in particular. So lots going on. Again, appreciate being here tonight. So that's the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. All of the public, I do again want to remind the public, when you are addressing the board or comments, make sure you address the board as a whole. Speak in a civil manner, if you would please, with due respect and dignity for all in attendance. Now, with that said, I do have several cards, which is great. Normally, you are allotted three minutes, which you won't be allotted, but I tend to allow the speaker to speak up until three minutes, and then I ask you to wrap things up, and things tend to go longer. Rather than have that happen, I will be asking the speaker at two minutes and thirty seconds to wrap things up. So I didn't want to interrupt you, but I feel to keep the meeting going because we do have quite a number of cards. And so I'm not trying to be rude when I ask you to wrap things up. I'm just trying to say if you could move it along as far as like your thirty seconds. Doesn't mean you have to stop immediately because you definitely deserve your full time. So with that said, when I call your name, when you come up, if you could just possibly restate to make sure that it is the right person that is up there, that would be wonderful. The first card is Erin McKenna. Now, if I mispronounce the name, I think that's a pretty easy one. If I mispronounce it, please. Is it now McKenna? I was gonna say, do you want to remind her on camera or on? Oh, yeah, again, yeah, the card states it, but again, everything is being recorded and is available actually to watch soon thereafter.
And you are corrected as Erin McKenna. It's a pretty simple name. All right. Hello, my name is Erin McKenna. I am a parent of a second grader at Lakes and soon to be kindergartner at Lakes. And I just wanted to come up here and speak today around some of the misconceptions around the village. I'm very concerned that there's a lot of misconceptions going about how the village will raise taxes to our businesses and whatnot around the community and that it's going to inadvertently raise the money that we have to purchase those items. And in reality, this is just keeping the status quo. And I feel like it's extremely important that if we lose these funds and if the board is in a united front on this and coming out together as a board, speaking that this is important, that we're going to potentially lose it. We're going to lose resources. We're going to lose teachers. We're going to lose the so much that's fabulous about Heartland Schools. We always hear about the negatives in Heartland Schools, but there is so much that goes on that is amazing here. My daughter has thrived at Heartland Schools despite COVID, despite it. So many kids have fallen behind, and I have seen nothing but, you know, teachers reaching out when they notice something wrong. I have never had an issue as long as I'm not combative to the teacher and I come in with an open mind. They are always open to me, and I encourage every parent out there to be that same way. If you come to somebody, and this is for the teachers, if you come to somebody with hostility.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. If you come with someone with hostility, they're going to come back with you and not be as open. So the village, it's extremely important. I do encourage the board to speak on this because it feels like there's a divide, and that is going to cause a divide in the community. And yes, you guys can have a divide in regards to other things, but I feel like the village is one thing you guys have to come in as a united front and show support, even if you're not fully behind it. It is still extremely important. There's many other things I wanted to point out, but I think others in my, others will speak on that. That was the one thing I wanted to speak about tonight, and thank you for your time. I'm going to try to keep it short.
Thank you. Barbara Tongovich. How to get better? Barbara? All right. Sorry, Barbara.
I timed this. This is just under three minutes, and thank you for letting me speak. Go. In the beginning, God created the heavens and the earth. This touches on creation versus evolution. Then the Lord said, "My spirit shall outstrive with man forever because he also is flesh." Then the Lord saw that the wickedness of man was great on the earth and that every intent of the thoughts of his heart was only evil continually. Now, the earth was corrupt in the sight of God, and the earth was filled with violence. God looked on the earth and behold, it was corrupt, for all flesh it corrupted their way upon the earth. I will send rain on the earth forty days and forty nights, and I will blot out from the face of the land every living thing that I have made. Those that entered, male and female of all flesh, touches on transgender, entered as God had commanded him. Then the flood came upon the earth for forty days. Thus God blotted out every living thing, and only Noah was left together with those that were with him in the ark. Now, it came about in the six hundred and first year, the first day of the first month. This also touches on the four and a half billion year theory. The water was dried up from the earth, and the Lord said to himself, "I will never again curse the ground on account of man, for the intent of man's heart is evil from his youth." This touches on mental health. And I will never again destroy every living thing as I have done, while the earth remains seed time and harvest, cold and heat, summer and winter, day and night shall not cease. This touches on climate change or global warming, whatever you want to call it. Every moving thing that is alive shall be food for you. I give all to you as I gave the green plant, bacon, and plant-based food. Only you shall not eat flesh with this light that is the blood that's cannibalism. Surely I will require your lifeblood from every beast. I will require it. And from every man, from every man's brother, this touches on race because we are all of Adam's race. I will require the life of man. Whoever sheds man's blood by man, capital punishment, his blood shall be shed, for in the image of God he made man. Then God spoke to Noah and his son, saying, "Now behold, I myself to establish my covenant with you and with your descendants after you. That's all of us. And all flesh shall never again be cut off by the water of the flood, neither shall there be again a flood to destroy the earth." God said, "This is the sign of the covenant which I am making for all successive generations. I set my rainbow in the cloud. I will look upon it to remember the everlasting covenant between God and every living creature of all flesh that is on the earth." This is the true meaning of the rainbow, and it's been perverted along with marriage. Thank you.
Thank you. Two minutes and fifty-two seconds, almost right on. Next card. Denise O'Connell.
Good evening. I'm. I know that we're having some problems with, let's just say, the president. I understand that you're having a hard time with understanding the rules, the procedures, and I really hope that you get up to speed. I know that, and I'll go ahead and just start reading this. From time to time, you have stated that you have no idea how to run a board meeting, and you have to call our superintendent evenings, weekends, and holidays for questions and clarification. There's known facts. You are a teacher in another district. While a member of the teachers' union, we can't have an at-will employee who serves at the pleasure of the board acting as the board president, as it seems like it's a conflict of interest. The president of our governing board has to recuse himself due to conflict of interest for the following. Contract negotiations, teachers' rights, and school or student expulsion hearings. There is a code of ethics that is the guide for our board as they administer the affairs of the district. According to the new Michigan law, school districts now are required to post the rights of parents to direct the education of their students. Is this posted? Parental rights are a part of the Michigan compiled law, and I don't believe you can keep parents locked out now that the official COVID emergency is over. Not even the governor has the emergency powers any longer. So I'm asking this board to make a plan to get the doors open in a safe manner guided by law. Education is legally designed to be a partnership with the parents, not a castle with a moat and a drawbridge. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Colleen Barrett.
Hello, everyone. My name is Calvin Barrett. I've lived in Heartland since nineteen sixty-seven. All five of the Barrett girls, which are my sisters, went to Heartland. My father, John Barrett, served on the school board in the mid-eighties. My daughter also went to Heartland, and she's an educator today. When I went to school, I felt very safe. Every single student who goes to school should feel safe. Also, I understand that you have the doors closed because of COVID, but I'm asking that you reopen them to parents. As you know, Heartland Schools, all seven of the schools, plus Cheryl Stockwell Academy, have two contracted officers, zero full-time, zero police presence. Heartland Schools have five thousand two hundred and sixty students in their seven schools. These students are not safe as far as today's standards for being safe in their schools. I'm asking for there to be a full-time officer in every school in Heartland, so every student within the school system feels safe. Mr. Hughes, I'm asking you, please, to do the right thing to make our schools safe again. Thank you.
Brooke Chapel.
Before I start, I just wanted to say that there's chairs up here if anybody wants to come and grab some, and we are having a hard time hearing back there, so.
Yeah, we actually just to say that there are chairs up front that anybody wants to sit up front, but if you wanted to come and take the chairs, move them around. You're welcome to, so. Thanks, Brooke.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. Tonight I want to focus on a couple issues. First, safety. That's a passion of mine. As you all know, you hear me talk about it quite a bit. But what I'd like to touch on is the fact that as we start progressing and trying to make this school a better and safer place, I want to point out that I feel as though the people that created this problem should not be allowed to be a part of the solution. We lack transparency. So as much as we want to have a resource officer in every building, one of the things that I wouldn't want to see is I wouldn't want you to be able to hire your own independent firm to come in, another third-party contract that we can't FOIA, that we can't find anything out from, because so far that's what's gotten us into this mess, is that we like to sweep everything under the rug. So I don't know why we would want to go that route. I really hope that you will consider putting on a parent and community member special safety committee where we can all work together, because no one has a more vested interest in these kids' safety than the parents. That's the first part. Now I'd like to talk a little bit about special education. So I'm very familiar with this because my mom spent her entire career in this field. I'm also in the process of trying to get my son enrolled, so I know what goes into this. And I'd like to just say right now that I believe, based on everything that we're seeing, when I look at these police reports that are going on, that does not look like success, you see. That's the point of special education, is we want to help these kids be successful in school. How are we successful if time and time and time again we continue to have the same thing happen over and over and over again? That's not success. That's the definition of insanity. Now, let's think about this for a moment. We're supposed to be preparing these kids for the real world, life outside of school. Well, how are we going to do that? What if, what if they go into a career and one day they lose it on one of their coworkers? What if they suddenly lose it on twelve coworkers? Now, these students are used to getting a ten-day vacation, and then we're going to let them back in to do it all over again. That is not success. We are not preparing them to be successful in the real world. We deserve, they deserve more, and I hope that we can get that. Because one of the things that we also are told as parents right now, we're being told that because a child has a label, they're more protected than the rest of the children without one. That is not true. All children deserve a free and safe public education. We don't need to give these kids labels. Not, let me correct that. I feel as though we're giving these kids labels so we can make sure that we keep up our expulsion. We haven't had an expulsion in three years. How is that possible?
Thank you.
Is it because everybody has a label and we keep them protected? Can we please, please protect all of our children? Thank you.
Trishel Fessler. Chris, are these in the order that people came in and dropped them off to you?
Okay. Yeah.
They are?
Yeah, I mean, the first person down, I set the card down, and then I just kept stacking.
Okay.
Secondly, in reverse order, I guess.
Okay.
Like, the last card I got was.
Just question. Thank you.
Hello, board. I'm here tonight regarding safety. I am a taxpayer and a community member, and I believe it is paramount that we have a safety committee, including parents, including community members, to be on that committee. This should be the utmost importance of the school board to do. I also want to say thank you to all the board members who have been advocating for transparency and that I encourage you to continue to do so for the community. And it is great to have a packet of information ahead of time to be able to address things. Finally, I just want to say I agree with Brooke saying that, and I already said that the community and parents need to be involved in this, that it's not just those that are up there calling all the shots. So thank you for your service.
Vicky Fike?
I'm taking Vicky's place because she can't come up here, so I'm going to talk.
I'm sorry, you have to, like, you have to turn in a card and, like, it's Vicky Fike's turn, so Vicky's not here, then.
She asked me to speak for her. I can't do that.
Then you, that card would have to be with your name on it. I apologize.
But she's disabled.
She just said Vicky's not here. I do not have, I do not have a mic where she can speak. The policy is that the person writes their name on the card and comes up and speaks.
Let her.
So.
Accommodate her, please.
President Costa, I would move to suspend the bylaw requesting someone fill out a card for this exception.
As long as, I mean, I guess we can have her name. Your name?
Chris, hang on one second. We're going to see if we have a mic that Matt's checking to see if we can take it back for it. Just give us a minute. Mr. Usher, are you in the room, by chance? Hang on. We got a mic? All right. Vicky Fike, we go find her.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I too want to talk about safety. You know, the incidents, some of the incidents that have happened in school, you described as. You know, the incidents, some of the incidents that have happened in school, you described as things like tantrums or, or an incident, when actually they involve things like choking out kids or throwing a chair and letting a teacher land in the hospital. These are serious issues. And I think that if we don't put some kind of safety together, Heartland in Oxford, those kids were known, not only to the administration, but they were known to the police, they were known to the FBI, they were known, the people that caused trouble. And I'm not going to blame the kids here. But some of these kids need help, as Brooke said. They need help, we shouldn't label them, but we also had seven hundred children that need to feel safe going to school. And they, and I don't like the fact that in some of these police reports, parents and teachers commented that they felt intimidated or that they were worried about retribution. I'm sorry, but that should not even cross somebody's mind. I don't know how there's not a warm, fuzzy way for people to report and feel safe in reporting, but that shouldn't happen. Because I don't want to see you guys stand up in front of a community and offer prayer after something happens. Let's make sure nothing happens. Let's make sure it never happens here.
Thank you, Vicky.
One in order, Mr. Costa. I just hope that we can remember that for our next meeting, we should make it a priority to change that rule. If someone here has difficulties coming up to the mic, that we will accommodate them, whether or not they can themselves speak, or if they're going to have someone speak for them.
Absolutely. I would have been fine if we just would have known who was speaking on behalf of Vicky, so. Absolutely, one hundred percent agree. Next card is Robin. I should, don't think it's Robin, we've come before, I shouldn't be able to pronounce it correctly, sorry about that, Robin.
So my maiden name is Kabolchik, Social Act is, is.
Oh, it's this Robin over here, I believe.
Yeah. S A R A V I C H.
Wow. Two Robins in the room, oh my gosh, can't wait to get that, okay, sorry.
Hi, I'm a little frazzled right now, so I didn't prepare this too well, but the issue of safety. So I read over a police report of an incident that had happened on September twenty-third of twenty-twenty-two. And I'm reading over the actual police report, which I wasn't able to bring that copy in and read off of it, I wish I would have been able to, but computer issues, anyways. The overall take that I took on it was how scared the students, the parents, and the teachers are to speak up at the situations that happen in the schools. So according to the incident report, there was a child who had a there was an altercation outside at recess, and I'll read part of it. Then Blank was picking up the ball and throwing it into the net. Blank got Blank upset and took the ball and ran to the trees, drop kicked the ball into the trees. The group of students got upset with Blank and were asking him why he hit the ball and why would you do that? Blank then hit Blank in the arm several times and was yelling at Blank to get the about the game and to stop. Blank stepped in and Blank then got, hit him. Blank told him to stop and Blank choked and punched somebody. Blank tried to help, then started chasing Blank and others and was saying fuck you and calling them fucking pussies. Blank heard Blank say to him, I'm going to shoot you all, in fact, I'm going to shoot up the school. Blank heard Blank say to them, kill me, kill me. Blank then heard heard him say to Blank, like, I will kill you. And this goes on, and the teachers were trying to step in. There was a substitute teacher and a couple of other teachers that ran interference, trying to protect the children from being hurt. Blank then ran from the group and as he was trying to run into the building, it gives the teacher's name, I prefer not to say it, Blank saw Blank come out of nowhere, running, screaming, and cussing. He ran to him. He ran up to Blank and said, you fucking want some of this? Blank ran the other way and was being chased by Blank. He went around the group of students and Blank stepped in chasing him. Basically, it goes into this whole thing about how this child. Okay, but I will say, the child's name is right here, it was not redacted, so I'm not the police reports and the redacted stuff, it's here. But there was a, there was a teacher that had to go to urgent care, and this person did not step forward because no other adult, the school wasn't going to press charges towards the student. You guys are failing our children, these other, there were five students, according to this, or five students hurt, and two teachers hit, according to this incident report from your schools, from Mrs. Chaney.
Thank you, Robin.
And you know, it would be nice to protect all the children and not just one, because you're afraid of a lawsuit, because you're going to be facing a lot more with all these other ones if you don't protect our children.
Angela Yarber.
I'm Angela Yarber. I want to talk about the role of the school board. According to the Michigan Association of School Boards, a school board is supposed to have an environment of trust, mutual respect, understanding, and shared purposes. Unfortunately, I don't see those qualities in our school board right now. I see lots of division. At January's school board meeting, I heard the new school board members asking questions. This is what the people who voted for them want them to do. Some members of the veteran board and the superintendent repeatedly pointed out, well, you're new, and that's how we've always done things, as if that's justification for continuing to do them that way. Quite frankly, it made me wonder if information is deliberately being kept from the new members. After all, they had to advocate that agenda information be made available before the day of the meeting, which is reasonable. It certainly seemed like the new school board members were not welcome to the team. This observation is confirmed with the resolution disclaiming acts of individuals. That was included in the board packet for tonight's meeting. It's also confirmed with the misinformation that was spread in a recent weekly update. Brett Keller and Glenn Gogoleski said nothing wrong in the podcast, and Brett Keller even stated that he and Glenn were not representing the school board. So why the need to spread misinformation in a district newsletter? Ironically, this situation reminded me of a response that my family got from Mr. Hughes back in twenty-seventeen. We contacted him because in the January twenty-second edition of the Livingston Press in Argus, there was a picture of Heartland teachers holding a sign that said, Heartland Teachers Care, at a political event that my family certainly would not have endorsed. We asked Mr. Hughes if the district endorsed the objectives of this event. I'm quoting Mr. Hughes' response. Please note that the sign does not say Heartland Consolidated Schools. This event took place off-hours and was not endorsed by the district. I would be happy to talk more about freedom of speech and the right to assemble by citizens of the United States. And then he gave us his school phone number. Well, do board members not have the same rights as those Heartland teachers at a political rally? The students and staff at Heartland deserve your best efforts. I want to recognize Michelle Blonde, yelled Brett Keller, and Glenn Gogoleski, who reached out to me personally when my family had a concern. Megan Blayback even met with my son and me to find out more about his ideas. Thank you for helping my family feel valued and heard. In closing, I want to implore Mr. Hughes and the board to act as a team and use your diversity of opinions to come up with the best solutions for all of Heartland students and staff.
Jason Ringa.
Chris, he was one of the last cards to come in. How did he get put in the front? He was one of the last cards to come in, wasn't he?
No, his card is right in where.
Okay, I just want to make sure they're in order.
Which one, hurry, go later? Okay, because you you seem concerned, I think, just calling in order. Okay.
Ready? Alrighty. Because we're building, the Bible says, sacred Corinthians three is their minds are blinded. Second, Corinthians four says, the God of this world has blinded the minds of the unbelievers. There's a veil, there's a blindness over the minds of the leaders and politicians. The Bible teaches Jesus Christ. He said, you should know the truth, and the truth shall set you free outside of Christ, there's no ultimate truth. The world is a dangerous place, not just because those who do evil, but those who look on and do nothing. SEL many decades ago started out as a general sincere effort just to get kids to learn. The radical progressive left hijacked SEL, making it a Trojan horse, riddled with sexualization, grooming tactics pushed by groomers to exploit our children. Has anyone here researched the castle.org website? How much money does Heartland schools piss away on SEL curriculum indoctrinating brainwashing staff members of kids? Castle.org is a national organization developing, refining, and transforming towards equity. Equity, equity, red flag equity, it's not equality. Equity means that everyone ends up the same. It's not equality of opportunity that everyone starts out with. Equal chance to start out with to work hard and see where their merits take them. Castle.org is defined transformative, transformative. SEL of core features of academic content integrating issues of race, class, and culture. SEL is a foundation for pushing social justice ideology onto children kindergarten through twelfth grade. Why does race need be injected into academics? Grooming is a deliberate act of bringing a child into sexual, political, racial ideology, practice cult lifestyle without knowledge of consent by his or her parents for the aim of isolating them from their families, so the external party can abuse them, manipulate them. We need to protect our kids' hearts, minds, and innocence. Majority of parents can agree with a collective complaint. Teach our kids, don't sexualize them. We, as parents, demand accountability. After the great devastation and carnage that happened in Oxford and MSU schools recently, why hasn't this administration moved forward like Brighton schools in having law enforcement or armed security officers in each school? What happens if there is a planned coordinated attack to hit multiple schools simultaneously? In twenty-twelve, a gunman opened fire at Sandy Hook Elementary School, killing twenty children and six school staff, all under six minutes. I'm just curious, since twenty-one until now, how many teachers and students have been assaulted by unruly disruptive kids causing chaos and physical harm to staff and kids within Heartland schools? Heartland schools are the multimillion-dollar industry, rolling in millions of dollars. Didn't Chuck just recently get a five-year contract of a total of a million dollars over five years? If this administration truly cares about the safety of Heartland school kids, they would take all five-year pay freeze starting from the year twenty-twenty-one to help pay for having law enforcement officers in each school like Brighton schools has. For far too long, Heartland schools has been an employment agency hiring administrators instead of educators. It's time for Heartland school board members to trim the fat, cutting administrators' pay and protecting teachers' positions and their pay. If administration knew how to budget a school district, they wouldn't be pissing away money and wanting a special election in August to tax local businesses to pay for the reckless spending within Heartland schools. Thank you, board members.
Ellen Nix, Nix though?
This is going to be a case of my last name being mispronounced every single time, isn't it? Hi, I'm Ella. I wanted to take the time to talk to this school board and to everyone else about something that I think should be really, really obvious. But apparently it isn't, because the so-called clean slate seems to be completely and utterly unable to understand this concept. We live in a society which is full of things that do more than one thing at the same time. Your phone can both make calls and browse the internet. Your computer can be used to play games and type documents. Your car can take you somewhere and it can play music on the radio at some, at the same time. The thing is that people do more than one thing, and organizations do more than one thing. So tell me, Mr. Gogoleski, why does all this go out the window the moment you walk into a school? Why do you think that SEL comes at the expense of reading, writing, and math? Why do you think that when steps are taken to include gay and trans kids, that somehow excludes straight and cis kids? What happened to the facts, logic, and reason that you love to talk about on Facebook so much? I have another question. The spokesperson of the so-called clean slate, Brooke Chapel, seems to be pushing really hard against a non-homestead military law. And you three seem to be withholding your opinions on this subject, which is a little bit suspicious and makes me think that you don't want this millage to pass either. And if I'm wrong, please, I invite you to tell everyone here today at this meeting that I'm wrong and that you support this millage, because if this if this millage doesn't pass, if this millage doesn't pass, five point five million dollars of funding per year will be lost. Tell me, how exactly will this help make school safety for both students and staff a top priority? I hear a lot of people here talking about school safety. To me, this kind of thinking reeks of the attitude of a child in the backseat of a car who throws their snack out the window because they don't want to share it with their sibling. But I guess, to quote Glenn, "Solutions don't have to work. They just need to make you feel better." And another thing I wanted to talk about. You, yes, last month, you are constantly on everyone.
You should be addressing the board, sorry. And I'm going to have to ask you to wrap things up.
Yes, you're constantly on the yellow cards, and suddenly, today, when it's one of your people, it's okay. Please do better, thank you.
Nora Scandi.
Hello, everybody. First, I want to congratulate Mr. Riley, the business teacher, that for both of my kids did a very good job, and my kids never forget him. He is a good teacher, he's a good achiever. And one more thing that I want from the rest of the teachers and the parents together is the education system doesn't end at the school. The parents have to be also part of the education system, and they have to check and to review what kind of homework or what else the kids do they have to go to, to be prepared for the school. I'm covering this right now with all the couple of words, but I have another thing that I'm repeating a couple of games, a couple of days again, a couple of times again, and again, and again. And that is for security in the school board. Security in the school board. I'm going to put a guy that is talking about the security, his name is Masad Ayal. Those gentlemen from law enforcement probably know this, the guy very well.
No successful attacks on schools in Ohio. Why? Because they publicized that. They publicized there are school staff in here who are armed, who are qualified to the same standard as the state police. If you make entry here to harm these children, they will stop you before you can harm them. I have the good fortune to live in the community of the southeastern United States. Earlier this year, I was proud to see in the community newspaper the headline story in which the superintendent of school flatly said, we are, if you come to this school to harm our children, we will kill you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a question. I want the answer yes or no from the school board member. Michelle, are you pro or against increasing the security in the schools? Great. Greg Keller, Mr. Keller.
Generally, what comments addressed to the board aren't answered at the state.
Why not? Why not? We are all those parents here. They want to know, are you guys working to improve the security in the schools or no? This is a simple question. Yes or no? Are you pro or are you against?
I can tell you that the board does have board reports and requests and are welcome to address them. So like when, when the public comment is done and board members feel they want to answer questions during this time, that would be more appropriate than answering with you back and forth right now.
No, it's like I'm asking one by one. It's not back and forth. I'm just saying, are you pro or you against?
You have reached your time.
I reached my time because you are going with your time. If you take your time away from my time, then I won't reach my time.
Mr. Schenning was trying to explain the process. So Mr. Keller can answer that question during his board reports.
Okay, when I get there, okay, is the answer going to be written somewhere or email? I don't want a phone call that, yes, we are. I want a documentation where it's showing that who is pro and who is against.
During board reports and requests, or perhaps later in this meeting, you might get your answer. But like, right now, we shouldn't be going back and forth debating because we can debate every public comment up here. So thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Len Patel.
Chuck, in your weekly update, you lied about what was said on the podcast and what little credibility you had is now gone. As if there isn't enough turmoil in the district, you go and start another dumpster fire. You've been abusing the use of the superintendent letter for several years now. It has become your own personal left-wing rag where you promote your sick woke agenda. And now you're using it to send lies to the district. You are consumed with the sexual, sexualization of our kids instead of teaching them what they need to compete in the real world. Michelle, Greg, and Glenn, Chuck is morally bankrupt. He has focused on the corruption of our kids and he will do anything to advance the sick agenda. You are the only three providing any moral leadership in the districts who keep up the fight. What about the rest of you board members? Are you actually going to support the censor of Greg and Glenn tonight? They didn't say anything wrong. And at the 24-minute mark, Greg made a disclaimer that himself and Glenn are there as private citizens. And anything they say is their personal opinion and does not reflect on the opinion of the Heartland Board. Is this what you're, this is what you're censoring for? You're about two weeks behind, Chuck. Greg already covered this in the podcast. There's no need for a censure. It was Chuck that created this debacle and he should be censored for lying to the district. With Chuck, it's just one dumpster fire after another. The district has been in moral decline ever since Chuck took over and it has become a free-for-all where anything goes. Chuck, you're, Chuck, you're a cancer on this district.
Brian.
Point of order, Mr. Gustaf, is that just somebody with one name or is there another name?
It's the name on the card, Mr. Gogaleski.
Well, well, why don't you come up here and say it to everyone?
Mr. Gogaleski, I'm gonna ask that you refrain from all your comments.
Sadly, you can't look me up at my job and complain about me because I'm self-employed.
That's why so.
Hi.
I'm sorry, one moment. So again, Mr. Gogaleski, I'm asking you, please don't interject with the call of the public. You have your opportunity.
Yes, you know tackling people while they're speaking, Glenn. All right, so so much has happened in the last month. I'm gonna try to speak as fast as I can here. I'd like to start out by proposing an enforceable ethic stipulation for our school board meetings, our members. Free speech in your own realm, your own page or blog is one thing which I will defend even if I don't agree with you. But going into the general public sphere, name-calling parents and threatening CPS while being a mandated reporter is beyond the pale. Shame on you. Next, I would like to express a thank you to the staff at Farns and Mr. Hughes for taking the needs and privacy of our marginalized students seriously. I lament that because of furka concerns, there are many questions the community still has that the school cannot answer. We must acknowledge that the most dangerous thing here is the rumor mill is getting to control the narrative. In fact, I honestly feel bad for Mrs. Gogaleski. I tell my husband everything, but at least I can trust my husband enough not to open up his app in a way that jeopardizes my job. I do hope you've been regulated to the couch. For the record, there was no cancel culture mob coming for her job, just merely parents with concerns about the district's opening themselves up to a lawsuit. I can personally attest that I did not ask for her to lose her job, but rather to be moved to a position where any and all children's discipline is not visible to her. Big thank you to Larry Parsons for telling the world that's her second offense. I hope she has a good lawyer indeed. I'd like to touch on the fact that we don't actually need to be a fever pitch to be heard. I feel like the golden apple of discord has befallen our district with no way out. I think there's many topics here that we all do agree on. Transparency where the track to prayers money is being spent is great. Safety and security for our schools, awesome. But I'm so confused what some people are asking for here. We have people screaming that they want us to employ more safety officers and possibly armed guards, but yet want to defund our district. They push this narrative that the school isn't doing enough to keep our kids safe, but yet want to be able to walk into the school whenever, which is it? The school knows who I am. They buzz me in. Especially since Miss Safety herself was caught breaking the rules and sneaking her entire fifth-grade cabin out past cabin time at camp. I see a whole lot of rules for B, but not for me going on around here. We want more security ensure why, what's wrong with simply asking for it? Why build fences and not bridges? I have attended a few rational conversations with our lovely, lovely clean slate supporters, but with the exception of a few people, most really don't want to meet halfway or acknowledge logic.
I do need you to.
Many are so far gone that cue ideals that are beyond reason just addicted to being mad. I want to give a shout out to Anita, who will actually have a conversation. And Hank, I want my $2 and my hug, buddy. I don't know where you are. All right. So in closing, I'd like to remind everyone here about the religious-based education our county has already set up. We have St. Joseph, St. Patrick, St. Mary, Holy Family, Holy Spirit Catholic, Shepherd of the Lakes Lutheran, Nice North Bridge Christian Academy, and Coursered Christian. So as I've been paraphrasing this thing in the past, if you don't like it here, leave. I'm sure none of those schools have safe space or rainbow spirit.
Maureen Clark.
I am gonna have to ask the audience to, to, to hold the conversation. Hold on one second, please. Miss Clark. Ms. Frye, the back.
We do have the, the, the luck to have an officer here from the Lewis County Sheriff's Department. I'm not gonna have to ask him to walk the room. I'm just gonna ask that people maintain stability while public comment is happening. I think it's a, it's a fair request from everybody, please. Thank you.
Hello.
Mrs. Clark.
Um, hi. Members of the Board of Education, parents, friends, community members, neighbors, I stand before you to urge you to make some much-needed changes within our district. After moving into the district about two years ago, I can't tell you that it's been extremely positive experience overall. I'll no longer be quiet. As a parent with children with special education needs, I'm watching one thing after another unfold within our small community. And I know I'm not alone when I say I'm scared. I'm scared for our children, for their future, their children, for the future of our state, our country. It is our responsibility to foster rather than smother the individuality and unique talents each individual child brings to the table and cultivate inclusivity and not discrimination. It's truly unfortunate that it's not the opinion of the money, but because of those that are extremely allowed with their insensitivity and the lack of enforcing accountability, it speaks volumes. Unless someone takes a stand and speaks up for the wrongdoing, things will continue to crumble. This is our cry for help as a community of parents with children who don't fall under the neurotypical normal standards. I have personally watched the effects of the bullying behavior that is taking place in our community. The comments on social media and various other outlets got exactly where you intend for them to go. You've gotten the attention of the public and you've gotten the views, but at what cost? Criminalizing children? You're spreading misinformation about kids who've never met before. Hurtful slanderous comments that risk their entire future, passing them off as truth. False allegations, lies. You've caused hurt to children, their siblings, and their families. You've caused pain that I hope you never have to experience watching a child suffer the effects of bullying at the hands of adults. You have hindered access to education by causing unnecessary chaos at the detriment of our children. It has been made clear that furka does not seem to apply to members of the school board. Children's identifying information is being splattered on the internet. Continue misinformation to further your own political agenda. You now have children that are scared to return to school because of the way they've been treated. There's no reason a child should fear a group of adult protesters outside of their school because it was determined that they have a right to an education by law because they were born with a different makeup of brain. Administrators and teachers should not have to fear repercussions for supporting students and their parents, all of them, through all the stages of development and helping them to succeed.
I'm not gonna ask you.
As a community of concerned parents, we're requesting the district do one of the things it does best, which is teach. Um, there's a push for archaic model of education. We have evolved as humans, research awareness of mental health issues, causing behaviors in kids in the past that were just deemed as bad. We know more, do better. It appears the Board of Education and your affiliates understanding our children, their special needs are quite skewed. Our district already is known for bullying and the truth is the kids aren't born with that hatred. It's learned.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. I'll ask you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Rebecca Pedewa.
Hello, my name is Rebecca Pedewa. Is that working? Okay. Yeah, don't worry, everybody gets. Um, so I was raised to believe that reasonable people can disagree, but being around politics, religion, or even just where you might get the best tacos in town. You all were elected to do a job and I respect that. Even though I'm sure I disagree with most of you on one or three, all three of those topics. I would be very happy to have a reasoned debate with you on any of the three because finding common cause with those you disagree with is important in a civilized society. But what appears to be becoming more and more apparent is that people are no longer able to reasonably disagree, that we resort to name-calling, we argue virtues rather than policy, and we're relying on rhetoric rather than facts. This is distasteful enough when it's adults in the crosshairs, but when you allow children to be your target and you enthusiastically wish to physically harm children when you sit by and allow and maybe even encourage others to denigrate, in filthy terms no less, the kids you're elected to serve, this is quite possibly the lowest of discourse and I find it appalling. All of you sitting up there were elected by your fellow residents to act in the best interest of our schools, our teachers, our education professionals, and most importantly, our students. I have a student who's in third grade at Round Elementary. We raised him to be kind, to work hard, and to treat everyone with dignity and respect. We're still working on how to disagree without being disagreeable, but in his defense, he's only eight years old. He's getting there and at least recognizes when he stepped over the line. He acknowledges his error. He apologizes when he hurt someone and he corrects his behavior. I am appalled and disheartened that some among you are demonstrating that you lack the skills that my eight-year-old is close to mastering, that you are in fact proud of this deficit, that you claim you sleep very well at night, fully aware that you have not mastered these skills. But with all that said, I remain hopeful. I'm hopeful that you will answer to the community for those comments, that your fellow board members will resolve to sanction you in a meaningful way, that you will never be allowed to enter a school without a background check and an escort. But most of all, I'm hopeful that you will see reason and recognize your job here is to serve all of the community, not just those you align with. I'm hopeful that you will learn to treat our students with the respect each and every one of them deserves and demand that you, those you associate with do the same.
I have to ask you.
And I'm hopeful that you will take responsibility for your report comments, take steps to sincerely apologize to our community and make amends for denigrating our fantastic school system. Thank you.
Anita Hatfield.
Hello, I am reading on behalf of a recent high school grad from Heartland. Occasionally adults are consumed by their own thoughts and emotions, forgetting the presence of youth who are experiencing the trauma they fear. What we live to, what we live to day in school is much more worse than any of you realize. The world appears more intimidating and ruthless than what our schools to play, display through their graphics, newsletters, mission statements, and even in our curriculum. Your ideal environment for us students is appealing and I believe you want that to be that way. However, the reality is we live day to day in a school that is unwilling to practice what they are preaching. The classrooms are not safe spaces. The halls aren't filled with laughter and love and the bathrooms aren't a place of privacy. Wouldn't it be an interesting idea if you actually asked students what we need instead of giving us what you think we should have? We struggle daily to keep our common sense and ability to think straight. With everything around us screams danger and stupidity. After 100 years of thinking that a 10-day suspension will keep the kids from fighting, can we finally admit that this doesn't work? It's actually a form of stress relief. Could we learn about conflict resolution at some time in our educational journey? The world seems filled with bullies rather than the people who know how to properly communicate and reason with each other. We walk the halls in fear that wearing the wrong brand or having the wrong haircut or speaking to the wrong person will let us get a black eye or worse. We choose to reduce our consumption of liquids during school to reduce the chances of exposing our private parts in the bathroom, which increases the opportunity to get a UTI. We dread waking up in the morning and we count the minutes on the clock until we are released. It is impossible to teach those who aren't willing to learn. Our educators are demoralized with students who lack respect, students that require more assistance, parents that enable this behavior, and et cetera. Educators have more forms and paperwork than ever. An administration they fear instead of respect and parents who try to intervene to get the best education for their child. Everyone is stressed, fearful, anxious, and a lot of times just sad. We are encouraged to be mindless beings instead of implementing practices to better our system. You talk about partnerships, but you choose to not include us in discussions or you ask the president of the class what they think. This thing called education isn't about you all. It's supposed to be about the students. It's about how much we know, how far that knowledge will take us in our lives and how to conduct mannerisms with our peers on a day-to-day experience.
I ask you to wrap it up.
As a Heartland High School alumni, I ask you, what are you willing to implement to create an inclusive environment rather than separation? When do we get to show you what we need? Thank you.
Alex Yarber.
Good evening. I would just like to remind the listeners at home and in the audience that Glenn Gogaleski was the top vote getter in the election. I, oh, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. It was Michelle Blondiel, but she was on a different ticket. This is a referendum on the way things are going with the board in the schools. Couple of people have taken some of my thunder, but I understand there is gonna be a discussion. Couple of people have taken some of my thunder, but I understand there is going to be a discussion later in the meeting to talk about censoring Mr. Gogolewski and Mr. Keller. Uh, language from the censure indicates comments and actions made in the above-mentioned podcasts were inappropriate and irresponsible. I disagree that either of those events or either those factors are present. Um, if you actually listen to the podcast, you might reach the same conclusion. Uh, I'm concerned that Mr. Gogolewski and Mr. Keller are being treated differently than other people in this room. Um, I would point everyone to the weekly newsletter that Mr. Hughes sent out where he makes basically allegations that are not true. He says that Mr. Gogolewski would grab them by the scruff of the neck, referring to kids. That is not true. That is not true. This, he, he actually said the opposite. He said, it's not like I would grab them by the scruff of the neck. My personal opinion, Mr. Hughes, is that you've incited the problems that are in this room tonight. By your, by your choice of words, and I believe that this is defamation. And I believe that you have put the school district at greater risk of lawsuit. And I'm going to encourage, I'm going to encourage Mr. Gogolewski and Mr. Keller to consider filing a defamation lawsuit. I would just like to read, read from the Black's Law Dictionary, how it defines defamation. An intentional false communication, either published or publicly spoken, the injures another's reputation or good name.
Mr. Yarber, I'll ask you to wrap things up.
To recover against a public official like Mr. Hughes, the plaintiff must prove that the defamatory statement was published with malice. Malice, as used in this context, means that it was published either knowing that it was false or with a reckless disregard as to whether it was true or not. If you vote yay to censure Mr. Gogolewski and Mr. Keller, at the next meeting, you must vote yay to censure Mr. Hughes in the same way.
Robert Clark?
Good evening. Uh, thank you for your time and listening to what I have to say. First of all, I want to commend the three of you for your, for your, uh, for your success in this last election. And I'm glad to see something going in this direction. And I'm saying that to the other board members, not necessarily to you. I have grandchildren that I love dearly. And I will not stand and stay silent when I fear for their, the years that they're going to see in the public school system, in this public school system. Uh, you'll see my, my face a lot if we go down that road. Uh, a little about me, I'm an AR, I'm an Army Ranger, Vietnam veteran. I spent 11 years in the sheriff's department. I understand the law. I understand ethics. I understand morals and I was brought up by a Christian family. I live in a Christian household. I owe an awful lot to my parents, but I have to say too, I owe a tremendous amount to the teachers that, that raised me, that brought me through an education that I came through kicking and screaming. And I really appreciate everything they did for me. I never had a bad teacher. I'm very concerned right now that the teachers are being muted, that they're not being allowed to express themselves because of the unions. I'm very concerned with that. I was, used to be a member of the Teamster Union and I know exactly where that goes. That was as a law enforcement officer. And talk about hypocrisy. It just, it just was not something that was conducive to a successful environment. Uh, this morning I sat down, I was going to come up with a list of things I wanted to talk about and I'm not a public speaker. Um, but I have to do this. I came up with a whole list of things and I realized I'm just, I'm just making a list for a list sake. And then it occurred to me, what do I raise my point? My point is to ask you tonight what you want your legacy to be. What do you want to look back and see as your legacy and the time you spent on this board? You really need to look at that deeply. Years from now, you're going to look back. I do now. I look back and I see my errors and I, and I'm concerned about that. But the success of our youth, your students, my grandkids, lies in your hands. Because these people work for you.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap things up.
Okay. So I, I ask you to, to take a real sincere, deep look at that. We've got problems. Our society, this country's in a period of decay. Our children's academic ratings are falling. We've got all this technology and all this knowledge and yet our academic ratings are dropping. And I'm not talking specifically here, I'm talking as a whole. Um, we expose our kids to perverse pornographic material and think nothing of it. Are you kidding me? I, I would not allow that in my home. Patriotism is being challenged every time you turn around. So I ask, I would ask that you folks take a real sincere look at where you stand and where you plan to go and how you're going to look back at yourself in years to come.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark.
Thank you.
Holly Austin?
Hello, and thank you for your time. I would like to address the board members who have been elected. Part of your role is to listen and act on behalf of your constituents and ensure the schools are working for the people of this community. Part of your role is to assess our superintendent and evaluate he is serving the needs of the district and this community. The superintendent has usurped his role in answering to this board who represents we the people and somehow thinks the board answers to him. He is wrong and I expect this board to appropriately handle the way he has libeled a fellow board member and an employee of this district. The purposeful attention the superintendent put on recent events was meant to fuel the fire and create discord in this community. Six of you were duly elected by a majority vote because we, the community, wanted you here. With response to communication before the election, I received no response for 30 days on extremely important concerns regarding sexually explicit materials given to English students. After the election, I received feedback from almost every single board member within 48 hours and I received a remedy to my valid concerns. That was great improvement. Thank you. The following is for a select few and only a few teachers and are wonderful because most are wonderful and practice with the utmost integrity. I find it interesting some teachers came to this board meeting to admonish a board member who was elected by we the people. Could it be because these board members elected with majority votes were not H E A backed candidates? How about the teachers in Heartland rally to have a conversation with parents in this district and bring back parent-teacher conferences? After all, this is a board policy. Rebecca recommending activities be implemented such as parent-teacher conferences to permit two-way communication between home and school. You're all here tonight, we can have a night of parent-teacher conferences. Since the subject of FERC has come up, I've had conversations with teachers, some sitting in this room that were negative in nature against students and against parents. One of these teachers from Farms had such a negative attitude towards teaching while she was my son's teacher that she even wanted to change careers. However, I see her in this room totally teaching today despite her disdain. I also want to remind teachers about appropriate relations with parents in this community. I have seen content on social media from teachers who have openly mocked and ridiculed parents. One in this room who mocked me on social media. Absolutely. That lacks maturity and this small subset can do better, especially since it is policy 3210. Lastly, some positive feedback. Erica M.P. has done a fabulous job keeping us in the loop regarding scholarships, BAFSA, opportunities for career planning, et cetera, for my senior son. Even identifying specific opportunities based on where my son sent transcripts. What an excellent example, going above and beyond for students to achieve success long after they leave Heartland. Thank you, Erica.
Mary Day?
Good evening. My name is Mary Day and I'm a counselor at Farms Intermediate School and I'm here tonight with many members of our amazing Farms Intermediate staff. We wanted to address, address the board tonight to let you know we are very proud of the work that we do with all of our students and especially our students with learning challenges. We want to ensure our community stakeholders that Farms Intermediate are at Farms Intermediate, our work is always done with the utmost of professionalism, care and attention to each child's individual needs and with respect for the privacy of each child as well as their family. We pride ourselves in treating each child and their family with dignity and respect. We work to help them reach, reach their academic potential. We are also committed to following all district procedures and federal laws when it comes to providing our students with an education. We believe that we are providing our students a top-notch education and a safe and positive learning environment. We work hard daily to provide instruction that is cutting-edge and backed by research. We continually are assessing our practices and working to improve our craft. In other words, Farms is a special place with an incredibly caring and nurturing staff. We work together as an amazing team of professionals and are known around the district as the Farms family. In addition to our teaching staff, we are guided and supported by a fantastic administrative team. We are appreciative of the support we receive from our central office administration, especially Mr. Hughes, Mr. Van Ops and Mr. Minsker who are sitting at this table tonight. They support every day the work that we do with our students and we couldn't do it without their support and guidance. So thank you. At the building level, Mickey Chaney and Crystal Brisky worked tirelessly to ensure a safe and positive learning environment for all of our students and a safe and positive working environment for their staff. They fully support our staff and our students as well as their families as we all work together toward the same goal, which is educating students. Tonight, we ask that our Board of Education join with our administrative team in supporting the essential work of our school district, which is educating students in a safe and equitable learning environment. We ask you to be the honorable representatives that our district, that you were elected to be and treat us, our work, and most importantly, our students with the dignity and respect they all deserve. Thank you for your time this evening, everyone else.
I believe the card reads Lotus Green.
Good evening. I'm a senior at Heartland High School and have been a part of this district since I was in kindergarten. Having heard the previous school board meetings, I would like to offer both the board and the audience a new perspective on what really goes on in our classrooms. There's been a lot of talk in the school board meetings about LGBT policies, particularly about how they are harming our straight children. And I would challenge you to think critically about how many LGBT students you and your children have really encountered at this school. As a student, I could count my LGBT friends on just my two hands. I think the fear of gay students overpowering and discriminating against straight students has been overblown by misinformation that mass media outlets have spread. There are over 2,000 students in this high school alone, which makes for a 5% or less LGBT population, according to my estimates. For reference, that's only half the population of our school's marching band. As a student, I see that many of my peers are struggling to assert themselves and be open about their identities because they're harassed by both students and even some teachers. I myself have faced homophobia from people who don't even know my sexuality. And while I can't say who did it, I can tell you with certainty that this is what you would see if you were to spend a day as a student in this school. Not a woke leftist brainwashing facility designed to make kids change their values. Having heard the kind of vocabulary used in this room, I believe it's important to remember that this is a school and these are children. I believe it's wrong that many kids have been vilified and bullied in these meetings because of the way they express themselves and the school board should work to create a better, more welcoming place for the next generation to grow up in. School is not supposed to be politicized and our primary concern should be quality of education, not discrimination. I believe it's necessary that we as a community become more tolerant of each other's perspective, whether we share the same beliefs or not. Tolerance does not mean that your straight kids need to become gay. It means that they need to learn to coexist with their LGBT peers. Tolerance is letting people be without harassing them. Schools like Heartland are huge melting pots of kids from all over Livingston County and one type of child should not be more accepted than another. Thank you.
Mary Beth Green?
Which microphone? This one? Okay. Um, hi, my name is Mary Beth Green. I have a freshman and a senior at high school. Um, I've seen the propaganda online urging the no vote to the upcoming millage. If it doesn't pass, it means about 50 teachers could lose their jobs. Schools have to offer the core classes, so we know that electives such as art, music, the construction tech, woodworking, auto shop, all could be cut. All the class sizes could, would increase, causing strain for the teachers that are left to teach those core subjects and we already have full classrooms. Um, this would be taking away valuable hands-on experiences for our kids. Kids that are college-bound and kids that are, kids that are not. Either way, these kids lose introduction to something that, that can become their future. My daughter has been accepted into an art school for next year that has a 50% acceptance rate and that's because of the foundation she's gotten with art, starting all the way back in elementary school and then building upon her craft through middle and high school. The millage isn't new. It's existed for the last 30 years and I don't recall ever hearing all this noise in previous years urging a no vote. It's dangerous and puts our schools and kids at risk for quality education. The yes vote ensures valuable programs for our kids. The yes vote does not affect residential homeowner taxes. The yes vote protects our property values. As we all know, people want to live where there are good schools. The yes vote is not a tax hike. The yes vote is a status quo for businesses who have already been paying these taxes for the last 30 years. I urge everyone questioning the millage to do the research for themselves. Don't let personal opinions of others overshadow the facts. We need to protect our children's education by ensuring the schools have the funds to retain our teachers and staff. Thank you.
Allison Larson?
Hello. First, I want to say kudos to the students that have spoke tonight because it's really hard to come up here and talk and I just think that that's great that they were able to do that. So, um, um, I have two children in Heartland and I'm speaking tonight to voice my concerns regarding the misinformation that's been going around about the millage renewal. And I want to urge all of you board members and the community to vote yes. Um, as we know Chuck, as you said, kind of the stats of that, 85% of our rooftops in Heartland are homestead. So this would have zero impact on our budgets. The money comes from property taxes on commercial and rental buildings. If the millage doesn't pass, the district will lose teachers, more than, you know, 50 teachers, higher class sizes, special classes and more. Um, there's people in our community that are sending out disinformation regarding the millage and it's believed that they want to defund Heartland schools and are urging people to vote no. and it's believed that they want to defund Heartland schools and are urging people to vote no, which kind of blows my mind. This would cause our property values to plummet, so even if you don't have kids in the schools, it will impact everyone here in our community. I've reached out to all of the board members to ask them about the millage and if they support it. I would assume that all board members would want to support this and see our schools succeed and continue to be funded, but this isn't the case. Many of you received emails from me, and Chris said he would support the millage. Cindy said 100%. She's in support of the millage and will do everything she can as a board member and parent to promote the millage. Megan said she's in support, and in order for our district to continue to fund initiatives and remain fiscally sustainable, the renewal is necessary. Kristen said 100%. She's in support. When I reached out to Greg, he said he would not disclose how he will vote, and he will not steer someone in one way or the other. While this may seem like a noble response, to me, anything but a yes is a no. Glenn stated that he is neither a yes or a no, but he's been active on his Facebook page, so I think we can see kind of where he's falling in that, and Michelle has not stated her position on the millage. It seems like there's some people and our board members that want to dismantle public education. Any board member who will not say they support the millage should publicly state why and what their reasons are. Any response other than an enthusiastic yes is a no in supporting our community, our students, and Heartland schools. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam, and I'm a mom that lives in Howell. I have two children, and neither of them attend Heartland schools. So, for full transparency, I do not live in Heartland, nor do I have children that attend here, but more on that later. My 13-year-old has been having challenges with school off and on for many years. I believe in and support public education, so despite the gap he was facing, we persevered to try and make school work for him. We tried shape-shifting him and turning him into a round ball so that he could fit into the round hole that is the school system. Turns out, he has a square peg. It also turns out that none of these gaps have anything to do with those who identify as LGBTQ or any concerns that a chiropractor would show up at his school and chop off his penis. It turns out the gap is with proper staffing, proper funding, and a foundation of teaching that can meet the kids at all the different stages of learning. So, I started looking for different options. We looked at school of choice. I know that Heartland has been a dominant, well-respected, and quite frankly, the gold standard of schools in this area. However, the safety of my child is more important than his education, where I pay my taxes, and all this other nonsense. I'm very sad to say that Heartland schools lost the most fabulous, smart, funny, kind, and charismatic 13-year-old because this district is not safe, inclusive, or a school of our choice anymore. However, rather than write a superintendent, bash administration, and try and join groups to take money from the public school system, I put on my big-girl pants and took responsibility for my kid. You know what? It's hard to not be able to rely on the school system for free babysitting. It was convenient. I still did it. I did it because my child was my responsibility, not yours, not the superintendent's, not the teachers, not the janitors, or the secretaries, or the lunch eights. He is mine. Rather than cry and fret over the propaganda of LGBTQ agendas and rainbow stickers and have social media tantrums, why don't you try taking responsibility for your own children? For those of you that don't feel safe with your children at Heartland schools, may I recommend that you don't send them here. Please consider homeschooling, as I'm sure you're a very competent educator. Should that not work for you, there's a multitude of online schools that are free and meet the public school requirements. Michigan International Prep Academy has been amazing for my son. You can even tell that my son view. My suggestion is all of you that do not feel safe with your children being here begin to identify as homeschooling parents. Finally, I had a board member respond to me on Facebook from their personal account to my personal account. I was quite surprised when a board member demanded a CPS visit on my behalf because my son was wearing a shirt with a swear word that was visible on my personal account. Threatening CPS in any regard breaks all boundaries of social media chatter, as even bogus complaints can ruin families and take away from protecting the many children that desperately need their services. I can't believe this even has to be said. Thank you for your time.
Lori Charbonneau.
Good evening. On February 19th, two of Heartland's current school board members, Mr. Gogaleski and Mr. Keller, joined a local podcast where they expressed displeasure in having to schedule school visits. They both stated that why they, that they should be able to show up to schools unannounced and conduct walkthroughs without restrictions. Mr. Gogaleski said, "I am, I am going to every school, and I'm going to find out how far I can get in without an escort." Doing so would be a clear violation of school board policy, and it makes many parent, parents extremely uncomfortable. We assume that some on the school board are proud gun owner, gun owners, so we know that many of you have had background checks. But that doesn't make a difference to me because, as in the podcast, he stated that it should be open carry on school campuses and that he carries it everywhere. Additionally, we have concerns when he states that he would be unsafe around students. Mr. Gogaleski explains why he could never be a teacher, because he says, "I would be a news highlight reel." Also, the potential FERPA violations are a concern. I'm here to present the petition that I started on that day for background checks for all school board members now and forevermore. I think that it should just be a standard practice that school board members have a background check. They're in charge of finances, students' welfare, and safety. They employ the superintendent, the teachers, the staff, the curriculum, and more. It is a lot of power. It is a privilege, and it has tremendous responsibilities. We had over, at the time of printing, we had 1,067 signatures. I'm not sure where we're at right now. But let me go ahead and read some of the comments that were made on the petition. These are all Heartland families, by zip code. "The safety of our kids and staff in schools is a priority. Making them see comments on school safety and carrying guns to test boundaries is insensitive at best and dangerous at worst. Do better." "My kids shouldn't have to be afraid of their school board members. My kids should not feel threatened or represented by a school board member that communicates hatred and threats. As a parent in the district, I'm appalled in the most recent comments publicly stated by board members, Mr. Glenn Gogaleski and Mr. Greg Keller. As a teacher, I'm greatly concerned about the direction that public, public education is headed and the extremism being voiced." Another member said, "My nephew and niece are directly affected by the irresponsibility and unprofessional behavior of this board." Another community member said, "I don't believe that any adult should call a child a expletive that was used by Mr. Gogaleski in the podcast." That, yes. You're right. No, you're right. You're right. Sorry. It was not used by him. It was used by the host, and no one corrected it.
I do need to wrap things up super quickly.
I am. So, the petition is something I thought I would never have to do. I've had people ask me, like, why didn't I just ask or approach the board to do it? But up till that point, I didn't think it was necessary, but when you hear horrible comments of our community and our board members in a public podcast, it's terrifying. And you can say all you want that you're not representing the school, but you are representing the school in everything that you do, in and out of your. This community is becoming toxic, and the tension and hate in this community is what's going to destroy it. We are now at a level of toxic where people are posting police reports about children.
I do need to ask you that. Sorry. Thank you.
The trauma that that's causing our kids and community is going to be a wound that's not going to heal for a long time.
Now, we're back to the other Robin. Robin Shalak. Shulik.
Shalak.
Shalak. We're time to charm.
Oh, my goodness. So, emotions are really running high, and I have been a resident of this community for 30 years, over 30 years. My children have graduated from Heartland, and now I have grandchildren in the schools, and I am a proud Heartland grandmother. And I just want to also, right up front, I have done a background check so that I can volunteer at Farms and at the high school so that I'm legal, because I know what the rules are. It's very simple. I've, I'm, I'm very concerned with some of the things that have been said. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that we cannot allow elected representatives to make, speak on issues without the knowledge to back up those issues and, and the respect so that it casts a negative opinion or on our, our community. And I'm going to stress the word "community" because Heartland has always been a community-based school district. So, we have to be very, very careful, and I want the board to understand that, that we really need to, to stop this because the overall effect of what this could have, it could have even financial implications for us down the road. I mean, I've heard parents say that they're pulling their kids out of the school. I know what the count is and what those monies mean if we have people leaving the school district. I also understand that student transfers, but also teachers are saying that, that they're not able to continue working in this type of environment. It's so divisive, and we need to stop that, and we need to find some commonality. You know, I've heard a lot today about safety. I do have to say, I have to quote BJ Paxton, because I've been around for a long time, and I remember BJ. She used to use the term "educationally disruptive." So, having parents wander in and out of schools and anybody that hasn't been allowed to go in is very educationally disruptive. You know, we can't have the helicopter parents, whatever, coming into the classroom disrupting things. And it's really important because our, somebody said this earlier, our, our common bond is education for the children. And that's what we need to be focused in on, is the education for the children and making sure that everybody feels that they're getting the same education as being treated fairly within the school district. And I feel that that is what's been happening. I have to say that I have never seen a problem at the high school or at Farms. I've been there quite a bit helping out as a volunteer. Okay. I do know that the, the kids are such a pleasure, and the teachers seem to really enjoy their, their students. So, if I see on the agenda, we're talking about the censure, I think that censure is, is a little too lax. If it was up to me, these people would be removed from the board. I feel very strongly about that.
Mary Peters.
I was frantically looking back on the tape because I could have swore I heard him say, "They," it's not like they grabbing by the scruff of the neck, but I couldn't find it. If, I'm sure I will. I can post it publicly. Okay, Mr. Costa. I'm speaking before you represent a very large group of the school community that are concerned that there is not a formal punitive clause in the bylaws that clearly defies the steps that are taken when, if, or a board member violates any of the code of conduct rules that were adopted by this body. Just to review, the code of conduct, the people in public office defines a minimum standards of conduct and ethical behavior that people in public office are expected to observe when carrying out their official duties. The code applies to all those in public authority and should act as a guideline to what we expect of them in terms of excellence, professionalism, intelligence, skill, devotion, dedication, and avoiding conflicts of interest. As a community at large, we expect the Freedom of Speech Clause and your oath to the office should hold some resemblance to each other. However, going on a public venue and brazenly attacking the school is the opposite of what is expected as a board member. In doing this, you violate the public trust. Your words are intended to create chaos and undermine the reputation of our district. It is obviously clear that some board members have alternate motives other than policies that benefit all of our students. To state our concern again, the community is very concerned that the Board of Directors has no self-governance provisions written in the bylaws that would address violations of the code of conduct by board members. Mr. Costa, as president of this body, we strongly urge you to request, if not this evening, a formal vote to establish a committee that will address adopting an enforcement clause to the bylaws that will address the community concerns when there appears to be a code of conduct violation by anyone on this board. The board should be empowered to hold another board member accountable and potentially deterring members from responding to our community in a less than respectful manner. Mr. Costa, clearly, the community's trust of the board has been badly damaged by the actions of some board members. We are afraid that if the board does not take appropriate steps of oversight and unacceptable behavior and rude correspondence appearance by some members will continue to go unchecked. Should that, should that happen, surely, the community will then lose confidence in the entire board. Thank you.
I want to thank all the community members for coming out to call the public. With that, that was our final card. And we're now on item one of board reports and requests. So, Gogaleski.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Um, turns out, I think I may have more to say tonight than I originally thought. Um, first of all, I want to answer Mr. Skendy's request as to whether or not I believe in school safety wholeheartedly. I do. For those of you who wish to propose that a background check be given to all the board members here, you know what? I signed it. I signed the petition. And there is one thing I want to start out with too, because I was told by, and I have to say this, Mr. Hughes, and I was also told this earlier by someone who I, I apologize for not naming, and it was mentioned by Erin McKenna earlier. A lot of times in these board meetings, they get a little on the negative side. They do. And people get heated, and we kind of miss the boat just a little bit in terms of why any of us are meeting here. And what I want to do before I get to the meat of what I want to talk about and address the big elephant in the room and all that good stuff, I do want to say that I, I want to salute our students. I was looking online at various pages, including the Heartland Consolidated Schools Facebook page and so on. One of the things that we don't do enough in these board meetings, and I think we're all guilty of it, we don't recognize all of the achievements that kids have made, not only in athletics but in academics. I went through, and I was making a list of all the accomplishments just in the last two weeks. And what I came up with, Heartland DECA Advanced Marketing Students qualifying for a trip to Orlando, Heartland Bands were giving concerts in the high school, Boys Varsity Hockey Game against Brighton went three overtimes to make it to a, a big state final round. Just absolutely incredible. Girls Varsity Gymnastics were at a state meet. Boys Varsity Swim Dive were at Kelvin in the state meet. Heartland Cheer Crew in a state competition. Ford Creek Students, Heartland. I could have written probably about 20 more items. I'm not going to do that. I just want to say to any of you Heartland students here that are listening, congratulations. You are the reason why we're here, and I, I wish you the best. Absolutely. And I, I wish you the best. Absolutely. Um, what I want to do now is kind of move on to big. To business and, and address the mighty big elephant in the room. And that is that terrible podcast that I was part of. I want to talk about that, and I want to talk about that in detail. What was said? Well, there are plenty of transcripts and video on social media. And you know what? Mostly are correct. Even a lot of my detractors, the way they went through that transcript, I have to say, they did a good job. Now, whether or not they interpreted it correctly, I, that's another argument. But I will say, if you're not informed about the incident of that podcast where Greg Keller and myself. Um, were accused of making some really bad comments, check it out, find it online, you will easily find it. Don't take my word for anything, just take a look at it. Um, as far as what else was said, there was a update letter sent out by Superintendent Hughes. A letter on three, one, twenty-three that was not accurate. But I'm not gonna get into that right now tonight. I am gonna say that because I can assure you that there will be more on that in the near future. What also was said, a podcaster, who I last checked. Has freedom of speech said an offensive word based on information. From a report, and mind you, when I say reports, I am not talking about rumor and innuendo. What I have in my little hand right here, twenty-nine pages of a police report. That documented over seventeen injuries by one child at Farms. Two of those victims were teachers. And I'm wondering how many of you actually know what happened and what transpired? This is a foible document. Anyone in this room can pick it up, can get it, can look at it, can read the details. Okay? Now, what wasn't said? I heard some concerns tonight about, I, SFRPA information is given out. I, I, I need to ask you something here. Um, do you really, really feel? That Heartland schools have things buttoned up so tight? That the only way information can come out is through various. Sources either internally or in the shadows or whatever? You can get a police report and you can FOIA it. It's real simple. Okay? Now, I know you're asking, okay, well, you were on this podcast, Glenn. And you mentioned this incident, so just, just where did you get that information from? Well. Starting last April, twenty twenty-two. I made it clear and legally official that I was running as a candidate for school board. And oh, boy, was I amazed at what happened when I made that proclamation. I had people coming out of the woodwork. I had people calling me. I had people writing me letters, emails, text messages. Over their frustration of things that were not handled in this school system. That's where I got my information from. I got them from FOIA police reports, letters, emails, the best, my favorite. Conversations at local events with teachers. Who have left the district either by choice of the district or by their own volition. Boy, that's a whole evening's worth of uh, stuff we could talk about there, but I'm gonna move on. Lots with sheriff officers and county officials, confidential board notifications I cannot share. The idea that anybody on a school board. Doesn't get information from a vast number of sources is beyond ignorant. And I'm gonna say that loudly. Pardon me for the attitude, but. In this FOIA police report, there's some things that I want everyone in this room to be aware of. There's a statement from school administration about an incident that happened. Back in September, September twenty-third of twenty twenty-two. I want to tell you one thing, this police report that I'm talking about. Do you think it was created on nine twenty-three, twenty twenty-two? It was done the day after. Think about that for a bit. Just let that marinate. The day after, and we had students, we had teachers injured. Twelve children, and that's according to one of the administrators at that school. She stated that after the incident, there were approximately twelve other children that redacted so-and-so. Had punched or done physical harm to. She then stated there were several teachers that were struck and several chairs from the lunchroom she had to pick up. After so-and-so threw them because he was angry. Now, there's statements from other personnel. Basically, some of the teachers and staff that were on, on site that day. This is all, by the way, and I, I want, want to stress this, in a foible police report. So-and-so was punched by so-and-so, those names are redacted. Which led to medical treatment at a medical center and a workman's comp case generated by a teacher. Hello? We're not talking about a very emotional kid having a really bad day. Do you understand that? There were people injured, there were students injured. And the fact that this district hasn't been sued into oblivion by this one incident is amazing.
This is so inappropriate.
What's inappropriate? What's inappropriate? It's in here.
Folks in the audience, I am, I'm not asking that you refrain from interjecting during a board reports. Um, so. Pardon me?
Yeah, that doesn't surprise me.
So it's being recorded. Oh, yeah, I, I, I ask the audience, please refrain from when word reports are being presented. Go ahead, Mr. Gopalski. I also heard names, people, if you could.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm turning it down a bit.
No, no, I'm not saying that, but I would just encourage you not to use any special or particular names of any.
I will not use any names whatsoever, even though. Even though there wasn't a mention of a police report, which I will not talk about, that's their problem. And after that. Um, here's, here's the big thing, this instructor that, that the statement from the personnel, the person that was injured. She told the, the reporting officer that not a single school official. Had talked to her prior to me seeking her out to get a statement well after the fact. Wow. It should be noted. That redacted is extremely concerned that the school, and this is in the report. The school's administration to include those at the central office retaliating against her. She did not want to be the only adult on record as her written and signed statement reads. There's more statements from personnel. This is in the report by the officer. All teachers, and this is what he said. All teachers that I talk with are afraid of retaliation by central office administrators. It is in the police report. It's also stated that redacted teacher, redacted was assaulted during this incident. But has stated she will not give any further statements because she does not want to press charges at this time. And now, there's a little excerpt that was actually read earlier by somebody that came up here. And I just wanna uh, real quickly uh, bring up some of these key points. There's an excerpt from a teacher recounting some events. And she writes, blank was screaming profanities and telling that he was going to kill him. He screamed this over and over. Calling people MFers and all sorts of things. This teacher. Um, I got, th- this is incredible. This is why I could never be a teacher. I said that, you know that? This teacher went above and beyond to protect her students. Man, why she doesn't get a medal? I don't get it. Get a load of this. They were fearful, the students were fearful of what was happening. Although the redacted student, the student in question kept approaching us. And threatening specifically, I kept reminding so-and-so. Of a student, another student that was terrified, that I would not allow so-and-so to touch him. I had him securely under my arm and kept turning my back. To see with so-and-so, if he would try and come at us. At one point, I was hit in the left shoulder. I don't know if it was intentional to hit me or if he was going for a student. But I made sure I was blocking his way to so-and-so. You did.
What's wrong with that teacher?
I'll tell you. Hmm. Along with that. This teacher told a small group of kids that were near me to go inside our classroom and shut the door. I wanted them as far away from so-and-so as possible. And then later on, in the statement, she also writes, it was then that my students went to a lit-bomb. So-and-so's classroom. It is connected by an interior door because they were scared. After we were told it was safe to enter. We all went to our classrooms. I had two students say that they were hit and they were crying. I wanted to be told what to do next and didn't get any direction from the remaining part of that hour. So while we're so outraged. Over some random person with an, with a podcast. That said a really ignorant term, all of this was going down, and I'm wondering how many of you knew about it? Really, um. And now, now it gets good. Statements from parents of the student victims. All parents of the victims, students that I talk with are genuinely concerned that their children will be retaliated against. By or by the school administration or central office. These are parents. So if you sometimes wonder why parents come up to this podium a little less than happy. These are some of the reasons why. Okay? Another statement. This is from a parent about their child. He had been choked in a headlock to the point of gasping for air. The prior year by the same student. At this point, this parent felt as though they were not going to get any help from our board. And that's the board that was in place in September of twenty twenty-two. And that I would need to seek my own legal representation. Um, I really, really encourage you to get some of these documents and read them. Because I will tell you, I will not sit up here at this podium. And pretend that everything is rainbows and unicorns. I will not do that. The safety of our students. And now, folks, the irony of the evening. Well, if you examine the agenda for this evening, things that we have to vote on. There are two items this board tonight will be voting on. One, administrative contract renewals. The BOE, upon recommendation of Superintendent Chuck Hughes. Approve a three-year, five to six percent raise contract effectively July first, twenty twenty-three. This, after I just read from a police report stating, parents and teachers are afraid of retaliation. By the administration for reporting assaults. How timely. Now, I don't think wagering is allowed in a board meeting, but I guess you can probably take a good bet as to the way I'm gonna vote. And. As far as the resolution, disclaiming acts of individuals, Glenn Gogaleski and Greg Keller. The recommended action that the BOE, upon recommendation of the board president. Approves the resolution, disclaiming acts of individuals, Glenn Gogaleski. And Greg Keller in a February nineteenth, twenty twenty-three podcast. In other words, Glenn and Greg were bad for not stopping a bad man, say a bad word. About a student that terrorized a school for a whole day. Guilty. This is your board leadership in action, folks. This is it. Are you listening? Everything is just not rainbows and unicorns. And if this police report doesn't sicken you to the core, I have to ask what your agenda is. I have to ask what your priorities are.
Yeah.
This, everything that I read to you, I wanted to show as a report and put up on our board. I have a couple of copies here and I want this as a statement of record in our meeting minutes that this is what I presented. I want it in there. I asked, I, no, I didn't ask, I wasn't asking permission. I sent an email out to um, somebody that does the technical portion of our meetings. And I CC'd it to Mr. Costa, our president. I later received an explanation that said that, no, you cannot present this stuff. Although there are no bylaws for or against it. And the reason was, I would hate to have a member present some, present something that other board members may be offended by. Like changing our mascot from the Eagles to the Ostriches, for example. Or have a presentation that may have confidential information in it. Is that not what we are here for? I've got a couple of copies in this, and if you want it, you can grab a copy or I can even email it to you. But I want it on record that I want this in our meeting minutes. And by his action, Mr. Costa has set policy by one individual. Which goes against our bylaws. I do not understand why a board member. Cannot use our technical equipment to show facts. It's beyond me, but you can ask him about that. And be aware, be aware, if any student, parent, or member of district personnel, and that includes teachers. Ever feel like they fear retaliation from the district administration. I would love to be notified immediately and confidentially through my personal email, glenn@glengogoleski.com. And I want you to know that you have at least, and I'm not speaking for anybody else other than three people here. Board members up here who will listen and ensure your confidentiality, since many of you. Have no faith in this district's administrative or board leadership, much like myself. And for those of you parents that have heard some tales about this podcast. And reached judgments and, and, and have made the most incredible. and reached judgments and, and, and have made the most incredible uh leaps of logic, I want you to know that there's a very easy way to find out what is happening in your child's school. You can ask, you can read, you can know, and you can get. Ask. If you don't know, ask. Include children, parents, teachers, et cetera. If you complain but don't ask, be quiet. Read, actually read school information sent to you. Not gonna say anything else about that. Know the options for feeding your children in the morning and how the schools can help. We do that here. Know the resources available for your kids. There are plenty of good counselors and teachers that will get you the resources you need. And lastly, get, get them prepared. And I'm talking about your students. Get them prepared in the morning and to school on time. Know the difference between special circumstances, emergencies, and plain old patterns of not putting forth the effort. Believe me, it's easy to spot. With that, I thank you.
Thank you for telling us all the truth about what's going on in our school districts.
Um, I, I know it's been talked about a few times already, and, and a parent even has um said in a board, in, in their message about what I had said about the village. I've been a parent in this district since two thousand and six, and my family and both of my sons have both benefited from a village being passed. Um, my sons have taken auto shop woodworking, um have participated in DAKA. My son is in the um alternative energy class. I wanna make sure that those things continue for all students moving forward. So again, I won't tell you how to vote, but I will tell you I will vote yes on the village. And I know we have so many great things going on in the district, but I also would just like to echo congratulations to all of our winter sports teams. I mean, not only, you know, do we have great children and smart children in this district, but we also have athletes and um it's great to see that we're, we're sending out well-rounded adults into the, into the world. Um, and then lastly, um, I know if you stay for the discussion items, we have two items regarding safety coming up um to talk about as a board. And, you know, again, um, safety is a top priority for me as well. Like I said, I have had children in this district since two thousand and six. I send my son drives to the high school every day. Um, so of course, safety is something I think about every day. And I will do everything as I can as a board member to support, in addition to all of the things we have already done and the information that Mr. Hughes has let the public know has been happening and changing and updating. I will continue to be a voice for safety in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shaw. Mrs. Coleman?
I feel like there's been a lot already said tonight. Um, I uh I echo a lot of the positive things that have been said already by some of our parents and some of our board members. A lot of great stuff going on in the district, and I really hope we can focus on that. Um, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mrs. Coleman. Mrs. Glaylock.
Right. In response to Mr. Scandi, it's three A on the um agenda. I tried to tell you that, but I don't know if you've heard me. Um, as it pertains to safety, and I think obviously with that vote, you'll see where everyone on this board stands. Um, safety is obviously a top priority for me. Um, it, it's really disheartening after me and my family have literally given our last minutes and our last sense to this community to be told that basically don't do crap. Feels really good. Um, you know, a, a lot of us, uh, I don't feel the need to make a presentation about what I'm doing behind the scenes or what I'm sending to other board members or, or how I'm interacting with the community. Um, I owe it to you all. And we'll certainly discuss it at the board table. Um, but I follow no one's agenda. I'm not here for any agenda. I'm here for these kids. I'm here for this district, and I'm here for this community. And I think that that's we don't hear me um agree with things that other board members come forward with. You'll hear me disagree with things that other board members come forward with. I think that's okay, and that's the beauty of having disagreements, but I wanna make that very clear. Because uh that may have been a bit confusing to some folks, and so um uh I just feel that that was, that was necessary. I'm looking forward to the two safety um components on the agenda tonight. I think we heard you loud and clear. It was like you um read the agenda ahead of time or something. Um, and um I think that, you know, these discussion points, and some of them might take a little bit longer than others, uh will give the majority of the community what they're asking for and certainly what they need. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Glaylock. Mr. Keller?
Thank you. Uh, I guess I just wanna start out, I wanna say thanks to the community. Uh, it's great to see a lot of feedback. Um, was also uh encouraging that many of you decided to read the board packet actually before the meeting, which is something I know that um took a little bit of convincing uh the board here, but I'm glad that we were able to get that through and have good discourse today. Um, secondly, question on safety. To answer the question Mr. Scandi posed, yes, I am very supportive of safety and as Miss Glaylock touched on there, items in the agenda today that I think you'll see more about that. Um, with respect to background checks, I, I fully support that. I think anybody who volunteers or works for or is engaged in the in the school should have that, and I would actually even say we should probably do them every year because they get outdated, and so we should have the latest and greatest information on that, so. Um, thanks for putting that petition together. Um, and then I guess last thing I wanna talk about um would be the uh, the podcast, and I don't have a presentation or I won't, I promise I won't be uh as long-winded, but I guess I just wanna say, you know, there, there appears to be a manufactured hysteria being promoted in this community. This uh manufactured crisis is said to be due to the host of a podcast I recently attended making a derogatory statement towards all kids in our district. If you watch the video, the comment was made around the two-hour and thirty-seven-minute mark while Mr. Gogoleski was in fact speaking, and I was intently focused on what he's saying. While the comment was made, neither of us reacted to nor acknowledged the comment. In fact, I didn't even notice the comment at the time and had to re-watch the video to catch it. Now, while I don't condone this type of language, the role of government is to protect all of our rights and liberties. And to that end, when I was elected, I swore an oath to support both the US and Michigan constitutions. These foundational documents direct us to protect free speech, and this is something I take seriously. Unlike some in the community who want to censor anyone or anything they don't like or agree with, it is not something I will participate in, period. While I support the right of others to protest me for something I didn't say, it is patently obvious that this is a clear, clear political attack reflective of today's cancel culture. It is intended to deter me from seeking out or speaking the truth, nothing more. Rest assured, I will not be swayed by these diversions. Instead, I will continue to move forward and serve the community the best way I know how and as I was duly elected to do. As board members, we need to ignore the distractions from these real issues and in this district and laser focus on raising student academic performance, demanding student safety progress, and stop tormenting our children with abusive ideologies and curriculum. Thank you.
Mrs. Wondue?
Thank you. Um, so yes, a lot was said tonight on both sides of the fence. And um what I'd like to reiterate is the reason I'm here is because my child suffered from some of the policies. She was injured. Some child broke her hand on the playground. There is no record of it in her file. So I am a big proponent for safety. Now, some of the things that you guys are not privy to are from my point of view, are from the community. You may not hear, we're not against teachers. This is not why we're here. So it kind of seems like because um we know, because we've been told that Mr. Hughes told everybody we wanted to fire the teachers. That is not the case. Um, I think people that know me that I've been around and my, when my children were students, I was the parent that always said, let me know if you need anything. I would help in the classrooms. I didn't disrespect anybody. I left the district quietly at the time, and I still haven't told the full story. But uh my child doesn't go here anymore. So I did leave the district for those of you who are suggesting it, but I came back because to me, there's something wrong with our safety, and I'm gonna tell you why I think that. Because of the, the, you know, it's not the student that we're talking about. It's, that's the situation while everybody's mistaking that we're talking about one student. Um, what I'd like to reiterate is that the student, um, you know, has, has a para. We all know that. Um, but the parents didn't, couldn't control them. And while everybody's saying that para they're not allowed to touch, I was told a story today from a parent whose child um witnessed a uh, a lunchroom lady um putting her foot on a special needs child just a few weeks ago and not letting the child out the door. And I know people out there know what I'm talking about. I want that investigated. If that, if anybody has a special needs child that, you know, goes to an elementary school, I would check into that and ask for some questions. Because that, to me, is not safe, and that child deserves better than that. The child that we're talking about deserves better than what we're providing him, I believe. Because not only did he hurt other students, but imagine what the child feels like now, having somebody follow him around. Children likely hurt in the hallway to stay away from him because they were not helped through this. That's child trauma. You don't know of any of those students that were attacked. They might come from a totally safe home that they've never seen violence. They might be come from a violent home. We're all considering only one child in this situation. What about the other children? That's what we're concerned about. Now, I'm gonna continue because I have a speech from a child that witnessed it and was involved in that. I am a sixth grader that goes to Brighton Schools now. I used to go to Farms Intermediate School. I was there the day that we had a mini lockdown. I was walking to my class and I got pulled in the activity room because we had to hide from a kid that was punching kids in lockers. I saw my friend, who was a girl, run past me crying, holding her belly. She said, ex punched her. I was scared because he is really mean. We had to stand there for almost twenty minutes. Kids around me were scared because no one knew what was happening, and it was strange to be locked in there without my teacher. I started to get that nervous feeling that I had last year about going to school. I didn't tell my mom about it about it last year because I was afraid that the boy would beat me up. He is scary and has threatened to kill people before. When I was in fourth grade, he moved to our school because he beat up other kids too much. One day at lunch, he told us all how he killed his family cat. It made my stomach hurt. This boy beats up girls. My dad says you aren't supposed to put your hands on a girl. He hits teachers too. Last year, he choked one of my friends on recess. The boy makes a lot of people nervous because he likes to hurt people. Kids are afraid of him because he doesn't get in trouble. One time, I watched him push a girl into a trash can. She fell down and knocked the trash can over. I felt bad for her because no one watched, wanted to help her, or else they, he might turn around and hurt them too. I try not to look at him. I stay far away from him. Why doesn't he get punished? I asked my mom. Why does he get to stay in school and why I have to go home when I didn't do anything wrong? I told my mom I wanted to go to school, but I'm afraid. I asked her if I could switch schools to go to Brighton with my other friends. She said yes. I love my new school because it doesn't make my stomach hurt. Every day when I go to school, I see a policeman. He's nice and keeps it safe. Now, if that doesn't break everyone's heart, I don't know what would. Now, while everybody's concerned, this is one child of many. Nobody's blaming the adults in here. Is it policy? What is it? We're bringing to light things that happened. Now, I want to uh, I want to discuss that uh Mr. Gogoleski, well, okay, sorry, I digress. Let me go back. Now, the other incident that happened that we have a police report for was Mr. Charlie. While everybody wants to sweep this under the rug and act like it was an amazing experience, there are so many things wrong with this, and those parents do not, they're none the wiser that their child was likely laid on the floor, lifted shirt, put jelly on their chest, and given an ultrasound. Now, this man, I know who he is now because I looked him up despite the fact that I FOIA the uh sign-in sheet. They didn't have one. Safety issue number one. So then, they wouldn't give us his name because they said, oh, you know, he's just too afraid. He's a, he's got a law degree and he's a doctor. He knows better than to touch those kids. And the only reason that came out is because we were, we caught the, this, this situation and, and, and raised this, raised the alert bells. But the problem is, is that the adults were protected, not the children. Those kids have no boundaries left anymore because a stranger was able to put them on the floor, lift their shirt, and rub jelly on their chest. Now, if everybody thinks that we're wrong for bringing these to, to the public's attention, that's your problem. That's wrong that these kids are being traumatized. And be because there's been a lot of turmoil. There has been a lot of turmoil because we're getting so much grief. We're trying to protect your children, protect these children. We're on the same team. The problem is, we know hands are tied. If hands are tied and people are gonna get retaliated against if they bring it up. Who, who saw that little girl with the special needs with somebody with her foot on her? Who saw that? Anybody? Nobody's gonna come forward, but I know somebody, adults saw that. I know they did. This was just a few weeks ago. Aren't you stick to your stomach that a poor child whose special needs had somebody with their foot on them? In the middle of the lunchroom? Okay. Now, the other thing I wanna point out is, um, let me find my notes. Because I printed all this out to make sure that all of you guys know where everybody's hearts and heads are at. Because we have emails back and forth to the board members that were here. Many, several of these board members masked and contact tracing quarantine children. We did not. We were against it. So we don't necessarily trust their, their moral, or their, not their moral compass, I apologize, their um medical or safety um compass. So I, and for some reason, I'll leave my bag, I printed out emails that Greg Keller sent originally to the board members with that. It was confidential. We had the police, he attached the police report. He said, hey, guys, I just wanna bring to light that um, you know, there's this police report out there. Read it because it's really scary, and this board is responsible for safety, and I wanna, I wanna talk about this. I want a special safety meeting or a special safety committee. Well, he was met with resistance. Mr. Costa said he's disappointed because he didn't include Mr. Hughes. Well, the board is responsible for safety, not Mr. Hughes. We are the ones that we get reprimanded. We get reprimanded when we ask questions and then we're told, well, I told you you could come in. But the difference is, is that I wanna be able to digest what I'm looking at. It may take me a little longer. It does, because I work full-time. I've got a very challenging job, but I do try to do my best. But the point is, is that when we ask questions and we're told I don't have time, or you need to come in and see me, that means I have to take a day off of work to see him. I wanna see the data. I wanna, I wanna look at it myself so that I can assess what I think of the policy that I'm responsible for. But we're told that we have to come in so we can discuss our concerns. Okay, so Greg had sent out an email. I had forwarded the same email, and I said, hey, you guys, I want a special security, special safety meeting, and these are the reasons why. If you look at, and there's other situations I'm not gonna bring up. But if you look at, there's, there's several situations that bring us to the conclusion that there's gaps. I'm not saying it's like completely dangerous and Wild West out there. There are gaps in the security and the safety of our children. And it's not from parents coming in the schools. It's from other students many times. So um, we, we posed this to the rest of the board, and we said, hey, you know, there's, there's a lot of these things. You can't tell me that this doesn't look dangerous to you or that this is, this is right. Well, again, we were met with, no, no, no. Um, and then, and we went so far as to Greg did submit. Um, okay, so this was before the nineteen. So nobody reacted. Nobody said anything. The other board members didn't. Greg and Glenn had the best intentions to go on a, a podcast. So sorry, the, the, the host swore. Yeah, he had a pouty mouth, whatever, but the point is, is the message was lost because people are trying to lead them into the people that did something wrong. We're just bringing attention. It's disappointing that we're protecting adults and not children. Our job and the only reason we're here is because of the students, and all of you teachers know it. And I commend you because I know you have the best intention for the children. We all do. Nobody has come after teachers. Since we've been here, even my speeches two years prior to coming here, it was about the administration, and it was about the things that were happening with the children. I did not come up here and, and berate teachers. So I have my track record that proves it's not about teachers. It's about policy and the administration. Now, I know for a fact that some boy tapped another boy on the shoulder, and he was told that he could get, um, he could get uh arrested for sexual battery. Uh, it was horseplay, but yet a parent can stand outside of a school and double flip off another parent in front of kids, and that seems to be okay. Some, it's, it's okay for some, but not for others. The kids' parents pull Some it's it's okay for some, but not for others. The kid's parents pulled him out of school because they wanted to give him detention for tapping a kid on the shoulder. She submitted an affidavit. It's a fact. So we've lost, I think, four kids from that. We lost my child. We lost the child that went to Brighton. Kids are leaving because they don't feel safe. So I apologize for getting, you know, tempered. I don't really, I don't, I'm not on social media. It's the only time I get to talk. But it's so upsetting that we're being attacked about this, that and the other, when really we're here because of the kids, not the adults.
Thank you, Mrs. Long Deal. I didn't type anything out this time um for that, to be honest. I I do have a number of things I'm going to talk about, but. I I'm at a loss for words for some of the behavior uh that I've seen up here. Um and I can tell you that. As a teacher, my students would argue that I'm never at a loss for words, but I. I I'm just shaking my head at. Kind of what is was taking place here in Heartland because several board members, not board members, sorry, several people that spoke to the public talked about community. And and I have some positive things to say about the community, but I. I I just shake my head. I because I I I'd rather just shake my head than make any comments at this time. Um in regards to some positive things, Decca, uh I know Mr. Kokaleski mentioned it. So a couple of people that came up to the call the public. Special shout out to the people in charge, Mr. Riley, Mr. Oak and Mrs. Ritter. An outstanding job for those uh people. You're doing a great job with the kids and I appreciate it. Another po- another positive was the partners in progress. Um we got together, the Heartland Board. Members of the Heartland Board, members of the Chamber, members of the Carling Library and members of the Township, and it was just. So refreshing to hear. Unity talk about all the wonderful things that are happening because I. Again. Shake my head at it, but it is, there are great things happening and it was just. It was right here in this room, right out there, and it was just outstanding to hear. There are positive things happening. And people know it. And I was just, I left so happy. So I wanted to mention that. Um special thank you to the farm staff for coming out tonight. Um as regards to the. The um petition. So it sounds like obviously the a number of board members have spoken about this background check. And I will tell you that that's not just going to happen immediately. That is something that would have to go into policy. We could have a conversation as a board about maybe we added in the policy language, like maybe an orientation. But that is something that is possible, achievable, or that's something that we can bring back, that we could add into something. Um it sounds like a lot of the board is okay on that. Um regarding. Safety, we are going to talk about that later. I think we're going to have some great discussion on that as well. Um. Village. I I will, I will tell you, I support it. It's great. I would encourage you to go vote for it. It's nothing but money for our district. Five million plus dollars a year that we would lose. So I encourage all community members to vote yes on our village. When and then lastly, um Mr. Go Gleski did approach me about compensation for board meetings. And it is true, we do have a policy in place. Where board members may receive thirty dollars per meeting. Um I can tell you and I I told Mr. Go Gleski um. I've never taken the thirty dollars. I reached out to a former board member, Mr. Everastri, who was on the board for twenty some plus years. He said he took it the first like couple of years and then the board said. We're not going to take any money. We're not up here for the money. Um so. Mr. Go Gleski has indicated uh as far as compensation. So I did reach out to Miss um to Rachel as far as. Getting that and she simply indicated that you would have to um kind of right here. You would have to get processed as far as like be in the district. If you wanted to talk about Rachel, what would they have to do?
Um one thing, one of order here. You left out a little detail. I told you that I wanted to take that money and I wanted to start a scholarship fund with it. It's not like I'm getting.
Make sure you don't ask every board member if they want their thirty dollars. So I'm just, Rachel, I I believe you indicated that they would just have to come in and. Process them like they were an employee.
That is, that's it. It took process. Board members are hired as district employees and and process as such. So however, you guys want to handle that.
Okay, because I like I said before, Mr. Go Gleski approached me. I. It's like, wow, I don't recall anybody ever taking one. I know our our board down, our board friends down in Brighton. Uh they also have policy in place, but I know they they do not take the monies either. So Mr. Go Gleski, um can I, yes?
Is the is the given that it's um. It's secondly, board policies, can that go? I feel like it's not a good fund. Is that a possibility or no with the transfer of funds such a meaning?
I have to do some research on that. Um you know, just with public funds and and such. I'm not. First and. That yeah, it's kind of a thing. So let me do some research and get back to you guys.
And then I know, Rachel, you mentioned also about like payment as far as like would it be at the end of the year or the month? And I think that would probably just have to be a discretion of a board member. If that's feasible. Okay.
Yes, just however, you know, however you guys decide, we can accommodate.
So Mr. Go Gleski, you indicated you wanted the. For payment, um Mrs. Shaw? No. Mrs. Coleman?
No.
No. Mrs. Claylock?
No, I don't need the payment, but certainly supportive if they can go to a great kind of fund.
Sure. I'm gonna actually echo what Mr. Claylock said. It can be used for a board scholarship or something like that. I'd love to participate with you.
Yeah, absolutely. I would like for it to go to a scholarship or some sort of back into the district.
Just to clarify.
I would like for you to correct to make sure that everybody understands.
I just want to clarify. So Mr. Go Gleski, you're talking about a a district. Scholarship that that the board would would donate to.
I would do any kind of scholarship, whether it's personal that that I give out myself or if there wants to be.
Okay. Okay.
Oh.
I'm just like, Miss, you know, Rachel's got a cut of check. I'm just wondering if she's, is she cutting a tier or two like a as a board.
And we can do it as a group. We can do it individually.
Well, I think.
What's the easiest? What is the easiest thing to do? That's what I want to know.
I'm telling you, I need to do some research on how to do a private scholarship. Because with public funds, I don't I want any.
Okay, I I will wait to hear your explanation, but whatever the other board members want to do in terms of developing something like that.
I like to stick with Mr. Go Gleski. So if we're looking at developing a scholarship, I. I I think a scholarship would be great, but I would. I would be concerned if we're going to go and do that. In light of the fact that we may not have five million dollars, so. Item two.
I.
Oh, yeah.
The clarification so that I'm working with Rachel on this. What I I hear and I know that I heard a couple of no's. But I'm assuming if we do the research, we'll come back with the research information for you to say, here's how this would be done. Um whether we can put thirty dollars per meeting for per board member in the way fun or. Does because it's public money have to be distributed in a ten ninety nine go with that and whatnot? We'd have to give you that information as well. So uh we'll do the research and we'll get back with you on that.
Thank you. Item two A, payment of invoices.
I move that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Chief Financial Officer approves the financial report as of February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty three. And the payment of invoices totaling two million, six hundred sixty eight thousand, three hundred fifty three dollars, thirty two cents. And payroll obligations totaling three million, five hundred fifty seven thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and twelve cents. Support.
Motion by Mrs. Coleman, support by Mrs. Claylock. So just. There are none, Mr. Go Gleski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yeah.
Coleman? Claylock?
Yeah.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Splandio?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. That motion carries. Item. Sorry, Mr. Hughes.
Um the next item, I'm sorry. It looks like there's a mistake for some reason. Um it says ninety one fifty committees, but it's ninety one fifty. School visitors, if you read the policy, so. If you didn't catch that, so I just wanted to point that out. I'm sorry. It does say that in the uh recommendations.
Item two B, revised policies, nine one five O, school visitors.
I move that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of Board Treasurer Megan Claylock. Adopts adopts revised policy nine one five zero school visitors as presented and discussed.
Motion, motion by Mrs. Shaw, support by Mrs. Coleman. Mrs. Claylock, did you want to speak to this since it was?
Yeah, I'm going to kind of speak to him uh side by side. The two policies go together. If you'll remember at the last meeting. Um we had discussed how the state of Michigan unfortunately um has changed some things around and um allows so two things. Sex offenders no longer have to report themselves to the school district like they used to have to. And technically um based on the law, they're allowed to participate in their child's education as it pertains to driving them to and from school. Um. Uh attending an event sanctioned by the school if the child is participating and for the purpose of meeting with an employee of the school regarding the child enrollment. Um and so that's what the state of Michigan has put in into play. We as a district, I want to make this very clear because I think there might be a different narrative out there. We as a district are not, um excuse me, I'm not, I'm not going to speak to the board. You'll hear their votes here in a second. Um but I am not suggesting that we allow sex offenders into the buildings. That's not what this is about. This is about actually creating some guardrails so that we have something to lean on. Shall we identify a sex offender is in the building or perhaps could be in the building? Now, there's a second part of this. Um so actually, we've been in contact with state legislature. Glenn and I are actually meeting with an individual on Friday to talk about how we change this bill moving forward. Um I personally don't support it. I think that, you know, we're putting ourselves at risk. I understand that people want to be a part of their child education. But there's some limitations to that. And so um these two policies that are coming before you um that are being voted on today are really just to put those guardrails in place until we can actually get. Um the state of Michigan to perhaps change their stance on this. Um and then that would make the reporting hopefully mandatory again, in which we would have a little bit more control over as a district. So I want to make that very clear.
Thank you, Mrs. Claylock. Um any other discussion?
You know, before I go, I just, you know, I want to make clear, I I echo what Megan said, and if I do not want to. Um call anybody who is a sex offender to come to the schools and then give them the rights to do it. I would like to say. Preference would be no sex offenders on a school board or on the school grounds. Um however, I understand why we need to do it. So I'll be voting accordingly. Thank you for doing it, Megan.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Sure, okay. No, I uh want to just reiterate what um Mrs. Blondie was saying. Um. Yeah, this is a a very good uh. Policy change and I also wish to explain to Megan. I made a comment earlier about the previous school board. And I think you may have interpreted that that I was lumping you in with everyone else. I was not. You were only on the board for a few short months and you were the only person that I ever heard ring up issues. And I applaud you for that.
Any other discussions to come?
Sorry, just a quick note. Um on the volunteer policy, I would. I would recommend we change one word in there from volunteers may be subject to will be subject to, just to close out any potential loopholes.
I think, I think because we haven't lumped his two motions, I think that's a valid. Point. I think we have to, I think we have to vote on this first one, nine one five zero school visitors and then maybe make that. Did you have something to comment on that as well, Mr. Claylock? It seems.
Um I was going to make the agenda suggestion, but um.
Sounds good. So why don't we hold on, why don't we hold on nine one fifty and then, yeah, again, I agree. I think Mrs. Claylock for taking the time to put a little more teeth into the policy. Can you do more discussion? Mr. Go Gleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yeah.
Mr. Claylock?
Yeah.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Splandio?
Yes.
I myself, oh, yes, that motion carries. Um still item two B, revised policy four one two zero zero nine, volunteers. Mr. Keller, if you just want to clarify so Renee can. Get the exact word that you suggested changing.
Yeah, I'd like to move to amend the addition to policy forty one twenty dot zero nine. Um and it would read volunteers will be subject to comprehensive background check.
I second that motion. I seconded. I did. No, I seconded. Oh, well, thank you. The second, the second date. Okay, so. So now do we, do we agree? Now we're just agreeing that that word is now in there, correct? Okay. Oh, we have to, we have to agree to accept the motion. Okay, Mr. Go Gleski, you accept the motion?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Claylock?
Yeah.
Mr. Keller? Yes, Splandio?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Back to the original motion, now with the word will instead of may. New discussion.
We have to actually bring.
I think someone already read it.
I don't know.
Oh. Okay. But I take a motion, I hope, please.
Okay. I move that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of Board Treasurer Megan Clayback. Adopts policy, revised policy four one two zero point zero nine, volunteers as presented and discussed.
Motion by Mrs. Coleman, support by Mrs. Shaw. Here we go, discussion. Mr. Go Gleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Claylock?
Yeah.
Mr. Keller? Yes. Splandio?
Yes.
I myself, I guess, that motion carries. Item two C, administrative contract renewals.
I move that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Superintendent approves a three-year contract renewal effective July first, twenty twenty three. For Scott Benes, David Minster, Rachel Voice, Kate Gregory, James Fitzgerald, Tom Europe, Melissa Fraser. J P Wheeler, Nicole Conley, Lawrence Pumperd, Chris Genevier, Mickey Cheney, Crystal Britke, Dottie Hottum. Tony Howarthan, Stephanie Way, Jason Rec, Carol Hayes and Scott Usher. Support.
Motion by Mrs. Coleman, support by Mrs. Claylock. Any discussion?
I do have six some discussion points. Um. So I was remiss. There was a note in February seventeenth. Did you know? I see it. It's here. Mr. Hughes is correct. That they were saying that there's going to be a teacher versus proposed administration increases. Below, you will find a chart showing the wage increases proposed for administrators versus what the teachers have in their contract for the next few years. Keep in mind that F refers to the formula as discussed at the board meeting. Now, I was, I didn't know that that was saying that we were going to vote on uh extending three-year contracts today. So um I had asked after we got the the packet, I had asked if I could see um the performance reviews. And the actual contracts, because we don't have contracts in our packet to review. We have a skeleton of a contract. Um that's not filled out. So they're kind of blank contracts that we're voting on. Um. And you know, in looking at this, it's not all the people that that uh were named that get this. Um but there are longevity bonuses in here um for, I think, nine or ten, ten of them. Um for twenty twenty three. Uh so there would get a, they would get a scheduled um increase merit increase, but then also longevity and longevity to me is a bonus. Um in twenty twenty three, um three individuals get nine thousand dollars each. Uh two individuals get six thousand. Um I'm sorry, four individuals get six thousand and then five individuals get four thousand. So they're getting bonuses um this year um plus merit increases. Then next year they get the same, well, some of them are increases in bonuses. Um so for this year, we're looking at seventy thousand dollars in bonus plus twenty six thousand in raises. For twenty twenty three and twenty, we're looking at bonuses of seventy two thousand um plus raises. And then in twenty twenty four and twenty five uh year, we get um eighty seven thousand dollars in bonuses. Um and forty seven thousand dollars in raises. Now, I heard a lot of people talk about being getting rid of teachers today. If the village does the pass, does the pass. Why are we, why are we giving uh where the bill, we're we're going into a recession. I don't know if everybody recognizes that. Um things are not looking good financially for anybody. Things are not looking good financially for anybody, um, but we're talking about how we would have to lose teachers, but yet we have a three-year contract for just, just the administration. Um, with bonuses, guaranteed bonuses, and I don't know if they're guaranteed because, you know, we have the skeleton, um. Skeleton contract, and we were not provided, I wasn't provided performance reviews, and Mr. Hughes. Said he can assure me that they are stellar employees. I'm not inclined to spend money on bonuses when I don't, I can't foresee the future. I don't get a guaranteed bonus if I do a good job of my performance review, and I do do a good job of my job, I get great performance reviews. But this year, my bonus was cut as well. Um, things are not good for anybody anywhere, and I, in my field, we earn money, we, we generate revenue. A school doesn't generate revenue, but we're spending money that, but then we're complaining that we may have to lay off teachers, and my, and my assumption. Is that that in itself would be three hundred thousand dollars over three years. Um. And then, and then I look at, you know, the number of people that are pulling their children out, um, I know of at least nine or ten. Um, and ninety-six hundred dollars a piece, that's another one hundred thousand dollars. Um, and then we are spending thirty-five thousand dollars on a special election. Those are just a couple of things that make me think, why are we, why are we giving out three-year contracts? Why are we spending money that we don't know if we're going to have? And, and in loop, like, why are we giving bonuses? Bonuses are something when people are prosperous, and when you're doing, you know, I'm not saying they're not doing a great job, that is not it at all. I'm saying being fiscally responsible and understanding that we shouldn't guarantee bonuses three years out for just the administration when we don't even know where we're going to be financially. It's not responsible in my mind. So, that's what I.
Just, you know, Mr. Hughes, I, I don't want to speak on his behalf, so if you feel you need to interject. I know at the last board meeting, because we all can go back and watch it. Um, we sat here and we had conversations about how it was a two percent and a two percent and a two percent, like you, you said. And then, and then, and then we talked about the formula added to it, Mr. Gogaleski implied that, well, how close this is in line with teachers, where we at? So we, we had a conversation at length about a, a three-year contract, and. I mean, as far as the performance reviews. I have not seen them. It's not my job to review the principles. It is Mr. Hughes' job to evaluate them, and if he finds that they're substandard. And though that would be reported, I, with that said, I, I, I can look at the performance reviews. I believe a couple of board members. Saw them. I, I could have seen them today. I, I, I don't, I don't review the principles, that's not my job. We entitled Mr. Hughes to run the district, so. I, I don't want to speak out on Mr. Hughes' behalf. I mean, is it, is it true, Mrs. Blondie can see these reviews? Is this correct?
Can I point something out real quick, though? I, the longevity, um, is after, so it's like they have a step ladder, and after step five, that's when it comes into play.
Okay.
So it's not, um. Am I correct?
Yeah.
So. Um, and I apologize, guys. They help the career ladders, so like after step five is when they want longevity model, which no longer the career ladder.
But it's, this is how, it's really, they're all in the little plot, the what, what their, their longevity bonus will be. At that time, so I'm not going off of the formula, I'm going off of this sheet of paper that showed me. That individual one, well, you know, has been here ten plus years, um, they have set A five in their base salary, then a longevity bonus of nine thousand dollars, then a schedule. Merit increase of two, twenty-six hundred dollars for a total salary of tax, you know, like, so it's not like I'm, I'm not ad-libbing anything.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make the difference, and I think there's two facts, and I guess I look at it as a track matter. Um, it might be different in education, you can correct me.
I think teachers have a longevity schedule as well. I think when they reach a certain amount of years, they get a long check. But I got, I don't want to sneak up, you have to part of the teachers, because I'm not.
I, I think that, I think you, you, uh, because you don't know the history, the history was years ago under Jan Sipperman. Um, when I was still a high school principal, um, the district was continually underpaying administrators. It wasn't something board ever addressed. And Jan did not address that. Jan then came to the board and said, if, instead of addressing salaries, can we put on a longevity schedule? What you find in board policy fourteen ten, and we can see that longevity. Starts with step six, seven, eight, nine, ten, then you're frozen. So if you look at the first person in your graph there, you'll see nine thousand across all three years. That doesn't change. So you, you can't necessarily use that as the accumulated added cost to the district. The added cost to the district is. Anybody taking a step and two percent on that step. So what we do is we have our, we have our schedule here. And when you approve the two percent. All we're doing is adjusting the numbers on this grid by two percent across the board, no different than we adjust this teacher's grid. Five percent across the board. That's what it means when we say we're asking for a two percent. It's simply adjusting the grid by two percent. So what you'll see is that each of the administrators will be getting two percent on half of the current grid that you see in board policy. The longevity, if they begin qualifying for it, so there may be some people in here that are qualifying, uh, for the first year longevity. That's the only additional cost to that person, but they're also not getting a step this year. That's why longevity exists. So we're just adjusting by two percent. Longevity is something that's been around. And most of those people on that list, they're at their high end of longevity, and it doesn't change the factor. So I think Miss Voice did give you a breakout. A couple of weeks ago about the total cost. If I'm not mistaken, Rachel, I remember asking for that, and I sent it to the board members after a meeting. Where you can see the total cost for each of the groups, and that's the total cost it's going to cost for next year. Which was, uh, which certainly was eight thousand dollars, I don't believe if I'm, if I'm mistaken, I don't remember what that number was, Rachel, do you? No. So, so I just want to clarify. This was a system that the board wanted in play, well, before Jan, board policy fourteen ten. Most school districts don't have a transparent board policy for administrative pay. It's not in their board policies. Our administrative pay is in board policy because. We do not have an educational administrative union. We do not have that in our school district. Most school districts have a union-based administrative crew. We stayed away from that, and we wanted to treat our administrators properly, accordingly, without having to say. Our administrators feel like they have to stand up and say, I want to form a union. As a high school principal, I did not feel I ever needed to form a union because I was taken care of when it was time to be taken care of. So I just want to make sure that you understand that history, because that's really essential to what this setup is and how we take care of our administrators in Heartland. That's what I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
I'd like to, uh, try to adhere. Um. Couple of things. Regarding the upcoming millage. Which is in May. Um. And I have to admit, I'm surprised that there's a lot of people that think it's really going to be close. I would have thought that it was pretty much, and, and this is only an assumption that I'm making, that it would pass. Couple of things. One, I have, I've been asked by so many people, do I support that millage? And everyone is so worried about a yes or no answer, and no one has asked me, what is going to happen to the money? If that millage passes. Two, we have a three-year contract here that we're voting on. Um, right before, we have this. Almost macabre death threat to teachers, like, well, if the millage doesn't pass, we're going to have forty teachers live. Why, why forty teach, what, why, why do we go right to the teachers? I don't get that. I'm, I'm not understanding. If, let's say, heaven forbid, something happens, the millage doesn't go through. Why are we just looking at chopped teachers' heads? I, 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 I don't get that. Maybe I'm, I'm missing something here. I don't know.
I. I was meeting with some parents, and the parents said, can you give me an example? If this doesn't pass, so Rachel and I have been meeting with all the PTOs across the district. So one of the PTOs said, could you give us an example of what would have to happen for five point five million dollars? Five point four million dollars. And I said, well, you can do a quick math calculation and say, uh, five million dollars is basically fifty teachers. Which Rachel and I agree that would be about what it is, so that could be what it is. Or you could say, we would have to come back with, to you in August. If this doesn't pass. We got to come back to you anyway in August because. We budget based on the fact that we have to collect eighteen mills. It seems like a no-brainer. We should be passing this. We have always passed it in Heartland. Seventy-one, about seventy to thirty percent on a regular basis. But the problem is there's some negativity out there trying to sabotage, it seems like, this idea that this should be a no-brainer vote for our kids. And so we, we came up with a number or an example for the parents to say, if we had to come back in August. Because it didn't pass in May, and we need those dollars. Then we have to come back to say, well. If you don't pass it, it's going to be fifty teachers, or it's going to be transportation at three point five million dollars. Plus something else to fit the other two million dollars. It would have to be the board. We would come to the board with recommendations of what's got to be cut. And the only way to give people an example right now is an easy number of fifty teachers, and I think I said it was at Round, if I'm not mistaken, I said, that'd be like not having Round in Village. Gone. And put all those kids in the other buildings. So when there's, when there's people that don't understand that this is a normal part of our budget, this is not something that's special. It has been here since nineteen ninety-three. We have to collect the eighteen mills. And if we don't, we've got to cut.
Am I correct that eighty percent of our budget is for people?
About eighty percent salaries employees because we're a people business.
Right.
And to answer your second question, Glenn, if we wait until three A. There will be a proposal brought forward on how some of this funding might be spent, so.
I, I, I guess I just am not real happy about the scare tactic. Oh, if it doesn't pass, we're going to lose forty deep, uh, hold on.
Thank you, Mr. Gogaleski. I, I, I think we need to focus back on the, the, the motion on the table for administrative contract renewals. I, I think the millage is a, is a conversation we're going to have, or we could have it on any one of these topics. I, I think we all had our opportunity early during our board reports.
Okay.
So I think we need to focus back on administrative contract.
All right, I think, I think there's a lot of things that we could spend an awful lot of time talking about a little bit further in detail. And I motion that we postpone this to the next meeting.
That.
Motion by Mr. Gogaleski to postpone administrative contracts. Seconded by. Miss Blondie. I believe we've had enough conversation as far as whether we're going to postpone it or not. So, Mr. Gogaleski, as far as postponing?
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw?
No.
Mrs. Coleman?
No.
Mrs. Clayback?
No.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Sorry, Mrs. Blondie, sorry.
Yes.
I have no, that motion fails. We'll be voting on administrative contract renewals. Any further questions? From Mr. Keller, did you have something?
Yeah, I just had some, I guess, some comments, really, um. Just have some concerns over the, the length of the contract. Obviously, we want to make sure. That we are both protecting the teachers, right? Because, you know, we've seen inflation get crazy here, so. Locking them into a, a three-year contract, I'm not sure serves them. You know, their best interest, first of all.
Um, the teachers have a three-year contract as well locked in, just so you know.
Right, the, the task here is administrators, so I'm just commenting on administrators, but. Um. And then, I guess. You know, the, the other concerns that I have, um, obviously with the millage. Doesn't seem like it, it will not pass, but in the event it does, I think we owe it to the district to make the most prudent decisions for our constituents. And so, for that reason, I have some concerns over the contract. Thank you, Mr. Keller.
And there is a clause in the contract that we can terminate it as a reduction in administrative personnel as to that award. So we get into that position. Um, there is termination clauses in language in here that would indicate as such.
Sure, but I think it's easier to, uh, add something than take it away. That would be my concern, right?
I would just like to say that i- in the six weeks that. Mr. Hughes let us know that this was coming, I've had. Plenty of conversations, emails. Rachel, um, I feel prepared to make a vote on this. I have the information that I need. Not only have I. Talked to, to, uh, Mr. Hughes about reviews of our administration, but I have seen their reviews, and I feel six weeks is plenty of time. For us to be able to make a decision to vote on this tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Shaw.
I think, sorry, one, one more thing, I guess, what was I going to touch on it, but. Um, I can agree that, uh, yes, this has been brought to the board in the past, and Miss Blondie touched on it, and Sean touched on it. I think as a board member, my expectation, though, was that there was actually going to be contracts included in the board packet. So rather than ask for something which I had just assumed. Someone would receive doing their due diligence, uh, didn't feel the need to ask it six weeks ago, I guess. You know, why it's being asked now, so. And I don't know if it's something new for the board, but, you know, I think there's. Several members of the board that, uh, you know, want to have their due diligence.
And to answer that, and I know that someone said earlier, well, you know, this is, you know, we keep hearing, this is how we've always done business. Well, guess what? This is how we've always done business. We've always brought this to the board every March, and the board does not ask for every single contract. Because they have board policy to compare the numbers to. And all, all that has to happen is if you want to come in and you want to see, if you want to see their performance evaluations, that's why I give you six weeks lead time. January twenty-seventh, they let you know what was happening, that we would be doing this in March. That February, we do a, a discussion, we did. And those documents, I pulled them quickly so that board members that called me this morning could come in and look at them, which I didn't have time on Friday. Um, but they're there now. If you want to come in to see them, I got them. They did. If you want to see the specific contracts, come in and see them. But this is how we've always done it, and so I, I can appreciate that, well, we're a new board and we want to do it differently. I'm just saying, in my twenty years that I'm aware of, on how this board is operated. They have had the policy, they looked at the policy, and that's how we've done it, so. Uh, I apologize if you didn't have the contracts, every single contract in your hand to review. I didn't know that that's what the board would want, because they never wanted that.
It's hard to vote on a contract that you don't see. That's, that's the concern. Any more comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. I have not had a chance to see, I guess, what would be deemed the official. Um. Performance reviews. Well, one performance review I have had in my hands is. Parents and a couple of teachers saying that they were afraid of retaliation by administration. I would like some. Investigation that leads to that. That I give anyone a three-year contract.
Thank you, Mr. Gogaleski. Any more comments? So, Gogaleski?
What, what are you asking? Uh, oh, your vote? My vote is no.
No. Mrs. Shaw? I'm sorry, Mrs. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Clayback?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
No.
Mrs. Blondie?
No.
I myself, I believe, yes, that motion carries. Item two D out-of-country trip.
I recommend that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, approves the out-of-country trip as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Shaw, support by Mrs. Clayback. And we had quite a lengthy presentation for our. Spanish teachers at the last meeting, only because it seemed like that, because it's at the bitter end. Um. I, for one, am super excited that, that you all are, they're doing this. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our, our kids. A little irritated that my son chose not to do it, um. Rita, what are you doing? Uh, I, I, I'm wholeheartedly behind this, and I hope the board members, they are the board members as well.
Um, I just want to say from the last meeting, um, teachers Amy Zabo and Teresa Smith. Did a presentation where I almost got out my AMEX card at the end and said, here you go, but I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to give my AMEX card, but I am going to give my vote. Yes.
All right, Mr. Gogaleski says yes. Mrs. Shaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Coleman?
Yes.
Mrs. Clayback?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mrs. Blondie?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, that motion carries. Item two E, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school calendar.
I move that the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the Superintendent adopts the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school calendar as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Coleman, support by Mrs. Claybuck. Is there any discussion?
A quick question, um, school calendars, this including the dates for, um, board meetings?
That is not, that is something that we said at our organizational meeting, are in June? In July.
Okay.
And I know we're still a few months away, but I just, I wouldn't be remiss, I know it's not actually about the school calendar, but. I know that our board members in some of the community talked about our evening, our morning meetings. When we do get to those summer meetings, I think when we get closer in the next couple of months, we can talk about, I for one personally, our board needs to be. In the evening, I think it'd be better for everybody. That's all related to this.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, so.
Any other discussion on the school calendar?
Just a clarification, how many days are built in for snow days or other? In climate weather?
Uh, normally the state gives, normally the state provides six days to us. So like in Harlem right now, currently we have round at six. Uh, because of some electrical issues, I think I gave this to y'all, um. Village is at five and the rest are at four, I believe is where we stand. If uh, if round does go over, there would have to be conversation about. Do you try to bring them back for a day after Memorial Day? Do you just eat the cost? Because it's cheaper just to eat costs for not having a day for those students at school. Uh, because of transportation and that, there'd be a lot of conversation around that, but that will preclude us from calling a date if it's unsafe to school.
Isn't there kind of like a good those too?
Sometimes they do, but it's, uh, they're constantly do, but that's.
Carry on more discussions, Mr. Gogaleski?
Yes.
This is Shaw?
Yes.
This is Coleman?
Yes.
This is Claybuck?
Yes.
Mr. Keller, yes. Swan Deal?
Yes.
I'm a simple yes, that motion carries. Motion by Mrs. Coleman, supported by Mrs. Claybuck. Item two F, resolution, disclaimer acts of individuals, Mike Golewski and Greg Keller.
I move that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Board President, approves the resolution, disclaiming acts of individuals, Mike Golewski. And Greg Keller in the February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three podcast.
Motion by Mrs. Coleman, support by Mrs. Shaw. With the disclaimer resolution in front of me, I I I'm gonna read it, um, and then we'll have discussion. Michigan law requires this board act only as a board. Only the vote of the majority of this board's members create action by this board. Under section one, two, zero, one of the revised school code, we as trustees. Are only to exercise our power and perform our duties as trustees when doing so collectively. And only at a regular or properly called meeting, special meeting. In light of that fact, Michigan law requires that we act as a board and only take action collectively. We are concerned regarding the community's interpretation of recent actions and comments of Mike Golewski and Greg Keller in a podcast. Two nineteen, twenty twenty-three, as single members of our board. As such, we, the Board of Education, publicly state that the comments and actions made in the above-mentioned podcasts were inappropriately responsible. The Board of Education members mentioned above did not think through the possible negative consequences who impact this have on our educational community. And do not speak for the board as a whole. The Harton Board of Education affirms its commitment to comply with the revised school code. Tunnel seven of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, the Michigan Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act, and the Family Educational Rights. Privacy Act. Discussion.
I'll open up discussion if I may.
Sure, just wondering.
Okay, so, um. The the amount of people that spoke today and the amount of people that wrote to the board. Far surpasses the amount of people that wanted anything to happen negatively to Greg and Glenn. The the conjecture that was put out by you, Mr. Hughes, um, was inflammatory and it was irresponsible. Because when you listen to what they said, they said nothing. They said no children's names. And I I am, I will tell you that when my child was in these schools, she would come home and say, oh, you know, Joey with the. Autism or Joey with ADHD, and I'd say, honey, don't do that, like, don't call them. She'd go, why? My teacher introduced them that way. Um, also, uh, recently, there were, sorry. Um, recently, uh, there were situations in the school, one of which where a boy, um. Overdosed. And was given Narcan, and we were not told about it by this this board, or I'm sorry, the superintendent. We found out about it before we were told about it and we brought it up. Um, there are several situations like Mr. Charlie, the doctor that came in and performed ultrasounds. We weren't told about it until we brought it up. Because the community and the children involved, a home and tell their parents. There are tons of things out there that that you could, we know before, probably a lot of the people on this board know. Because people tell us. So when we're talking about purpa and and telling, saying that these guys did something wrong. The intention was to bring to light that we believe that there is a safety issue in the schools that we are responsible for. We do not wanna be on the news, be told, you know, oh, well, you could have done better. We want to make sure that even if we're wrong and we sound like jerks, it doesn't matter to us. Because one child hurt is one child too many. And these guys had the best intentions of going on that podcast. They did not say anything wrong, while the host may have used, you know, negative terminology. It wasn't up to these guys to correct the host of a show, right? They could, they could say that they don't appreciate it. And I guarantee they would if you'd asked them, but they did not go on the show, went and give away any secrets or anything. And the fact that this board is is is, you know, and and the people that left after we voted on contracts, we're not concerned with safety. We are concerned with safety. So that's why these guys went on the podcast and discussed it. So all I'm trying to say is that this is ridiculous. It's ridiculous, it's irresponsible, and it's wrong.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna have to ask the audience just to kind of maintain themselves. Uh, thank you, Mrs. Swan Deal. Uh, this, you're right, this is an opportunity for Mr. Keller, Mr. Gogaleski to speak. I'll be out of this. This would be the appropriate time, I would feel.
Okay, great. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this. I just wanna review just for a bit here, um. The comments that I made. Especially the one about grabbing, grabbing someone by the scruff of the neck. There are too. Many. Snippets of that video out there. To try to make it look like I'm talking about grabbing kids by the scruff of the neck. And if you took it that way, I really don't care. The other thing. I will tell you this. If I am ever in a situation. Where I see children. Being injured. I see a teacher being injured. I probably will forget protocol. I wasn't trained in it, but, you know, I will make sure that everyone stays safe, including the culprit. As far as me trying to get into schools, what in the hell do you think I'm trying to do by doing that? Grab kids by the scruff of the neck? Seriously? There are safety problems. There are people that report to me all the time about doors that are not locked. Doors that are not secured. And you're upset that a board member wants to try to open up a door? I have no apologies for that, none, zero.
Thank you, Mr. Gogaleski, for clarifying your your stance on this. Uh, Mr. Keller, I know this 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 disclaimer act involves you as well. I I don't know if you wanted to get to it.
Yep, just waiting my turn. So, um. Reading through a resolution. Uh, it appears to state that, uh, as private citizens, we're allowed to exercise. Um, our rights of free speech. I definitely support the right for others to have free speech, including everybody here on this panel and those out there. Um, I guess I I don't understand. Why as a board we need to make a declaration when we have a perfectly good document. Called the Constitution that already gives us that. Policy zero, one, four, three dot one that states, and I'll quote. The board members shall, when writing or speaking on school matters, make it clear that their views do not necessarily reflect. The views of the board or their colleagues on the board. And so anyone that actually took the time to watch and listen, um. Clearly stated that at the twenty-four minute mark of the podcast, just to make sure that, you know, there, anyone was not clear. Can't answer that.
Mr. Keller, sorry, I I I I feel that, and I would I would encourage you just to speak. Based on what you want to say rather than. Because I know that we involve the, and I mean, I'm trying to cut you off, but if we involve the the crowd, I'm afraid that you're not gonna be able to get out the points that you want.
All right, so again, at the twenty-four minute mark, I I mentioned that. The views that we would express or could express are not that of. The board, but our own individuals. Um, so again, I think between the policy. Um, the the declaration that was made on the podcast. We we have a a did you know from December ninth that was written to the board? And I'll highlight that, since the Board of Education speaks for the community during meetings of the public only. Outside of meetings of the public, you represent yourself as a community member who happens to sit on the Board of Education. So again, this was from our administration. We need this nice imaging this. And simply an attempt to silence attack duly elected board members. Or things that maybe you don't agree with, so again, I don't understand why this resolution. Needs to get voted on.
And one more thing, too, I am just so puzzled. Why a parent can make a request. About a couple of personnel at a rally that was very political. And yet, the superintendent states that, well, he'll be more than happy to talk about freedom of speech and the right to assemble. Does that?
One of my other board members, if they feel they wanna chant, and they can, I I'm, and I had a conversation with Mr. Keller on this. Earlier in the week. This this disclaimer resolution makes it clear to the community that. It is true, you you do not speak for the board, because I I can tell you, I I was inundated with. Emails, um, of parents that were thinking. Are they speaking on behalf of the board? It sounds like they're doing something that, and and I, so this statement is not to silence anybody. This statement is. Exactly what it reads. That. That you participated in something. We feel it's irresponsible and inappropriate. It has negative impact on our community, and I think that's, that's, that's shown. And and that you, you two individuals did not, and speak for the board on that. It's 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 plain as day, that's what, that's what it says. Nothing more, nothing less. Not trying to silence anybody's freedom of speech. But with that said, there are consequences for 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 freedom of speech. Like, if I went into a movie theater. And yelled, fire, there's consequences. So, I, I'm certain, Mr. K. Sounds, Gogaleski, it is true, you have, you have the right to to vote for this. You also have the right, I had a conversation with Mr. Keller. Mr. Keller said, so you're telling me I, you know, like, I can't go back on a podcast? I said, I never said that at all. You're welcome to go back on a podcast. You have the right to do whatever you want. This statement simply makes clear. That those actions were not representative of this board's.
Well, Mr. K, for every parent that called you and complained. I can assure you, I've had a counter argument where a parent has said you didn't do anything wrong.
This 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 board does not, I am not the lone voice for this board, so other board members are welcome to chime in, and then and then we can have a vote on this.
I'll chime in.
Okay.
I think that, um, certainly. I- in the in the spirit of certainly not censoring anyone, what I wish would occur and what I, what I'm hopeful for in the future is that. That that energy can be put towards impact. So let's take a look at our protocols. Let's take a look at what's actually happening. Let's take a look at our policies. Make sure they're reflective of what's happening. Propose changes, propose whatever we need. Um, and 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 kind of channel that energy to making impact and change within our district. Um, I think that that is is where all of our efforts, we're all very intelligent individuals. Could really shine and, um. You know, while. It wouldn't have been my way of of making a presentation to the community. I think that making an impact and really. Being boots on the ground and creating some of that work is gonna be where you make a difference.
I I just wanted to address, um, one of the comments that Mrs. Swan Deal brought up earlier, that. A lot of information that from different situations, different things that happen in schools. Yeah, there is word of mouth, there's rumor mills, and there's, there's a lot of parents who will contact each of you or contact us. Like, hey, I heard this. I heard this is what happened, and I heard this kid is this kind of trouble, but. You don't necessarily have the context. You don't have the information behind it, so to make decisions based on that. It doesn't make any sense. And that that to me is where some of the comments came from on the on the podcast. That's where other comments come from, from people seated seated here at this table. And I think that that even though. It's word of mouth and it's word on the street and people have this information, it doesn't mean that it's not confidential information. Not information that you should be, like, like, confidential. Obviously, I think it's kept confidentially, but it's information that's not intended for public consumption necessarily. So I, it. But the way things played out in the conversations that you had on the podcast. I understand that there are definitely misconceptions about what was actually said, what actually wasn't said. I get it. But the lack of professionalism, the lack of. Of respect for the position and the lack of respect for the district and the people who work in it, that's what I would like to disclaim. Myself from and disclaim this board as a whole from. I don't think it's appropriate to to. To carry on the way that the conversation carried on. So I feel that this resolution is appropriate. To distance the board and the power that we have together as a board from those comments and actions. Okay, may I respond, please? Cause you brought me on. So there is proof and evidence of everything we said. We emailed everybody and said, hey, can we get a special safety committee? Can we do that, please? But prior to us joining, we had voted that four people had to vote for special meetings. Oddly, there's only three of us. And, you know, Megan, as she said, she doesn't side with anybody, so we, we're not sure. We don't include her in the, you know, what we're in. In, so, um, and that's not a negative thing at all, but I'm saying that there is proof. We tried to get safety committee, we tried to discuss it, um. And we couldn't. And so these guys decided that it was important enough, because so many parents are chiming in on this. You heard the speech of. You heard children out of their own mouths saying they feel unsafe. You heard stories, but they're true because we have. Evidence, we've got police reports, and because we weren't getting any traction, that's why these guys did it. I'm speaking for them because we've talked at length about it. It's unfortunate that it went the way that it did, because that's not what the intent was. But the fact that they're concerned about safety, they're concerned about the students, they did not provide any information that. Isn't out there, that everybody knows, they didn't say any names. Um, they weren't dragging the kid, because again, the kids also, the so, the the boy is also, uh. Of a concern, because if he getting the help he need, that would have been a, that's a subject we really need to delve into. I don't know. Thank you, because the community said, hey, I like what you're talking about. I like the fact that you're gonna question everything people do. Because if you don't question it, then things start to happen, and then all of a sudden it's out of control. So our role to represent the community, is to let them know what happened in centuring or whatever we're doing here. Isn't essentially, you know. Doing them a disservice and doing the community a disservice that believes that we have a safety issue. Because you're gonna make them look bad. That's fine, we all get that you didn't support it, that's fine. But having a piece of paper that everybody has to vote on is is just overkill, in my opinion.
So, I'm sorry, I wanna real quick, you, some just wanna be like. School safeties are the next two action items that we're, well, I'm sorry, the next two discussion items that are we're gonna speak to, so I don't. I I don't, I don't think the current motion, this resolution, is about school safety. Um, so. I mean, this is, this is about. This is about. Disclaiming. The actions taken. And 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 that's it. Again, so it's not about school safety, in my opinion, and and. And 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 that's it. Again, so it's not about school safety, in my opinion. And perhaps if other board members feel it's about, this is about school safety. I I I don't see it.
How many people have to be injured by one person before it becomes a safety issue? What about safety? Do you think it was the intent of Greg or I to go on a podcast? And just talk bad about one kid because, gosh, it sounded like a fun thing to do. Come on. I can't even use the projector to give a presentation. So yeah, I might say things on a podcast that maybe some people won't like.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm a little bit concerned here because it feels like there's a lack of consistency. There's. Feedback from the community members on, you know, any one of us board, and that's fine. I'm I'm happy to take any critiques or criticisms. But it again, feels like we're cherry picking a specific instance. You know, we're not, we're not talking about an instance where. Someone who may or may have at one point in time run. Something on social media and chose to censor folks in the community. I don't recall voting on that particular resolution. You know, I'm just looking for some consistency. We're talking about three Rs, respect. Well, let's. Let's do that amongst us, to all board members. If we want to act as a team, then I I suggest we don't support this resolution.
Mr. Bob Lassie, your vote?
I I actually get a vote in this?
Of course you do.
Okay, well, no.
It's a shock.
Yes.
This Coleman.
Yes.
This Claylock.
Only speak for myself, yes.
Shikeller. No. Splendio?
No.
I thought I am a yes, that motion carries for three. In school safety. The crowd again, quiet themselves, please, so we can continue on with this meeting.
I'd like to talk about school safety.
Continue on with the meeting that we're just gonna have, call for a recess, or I'm gonna have the deputy maybe to. Call it down. So here we go, item three A, school safety.
In, I've done, I've gotten some research, obviously, from the public. There was a presentation on last board member by Brooke. Indicating the different resources surrounding districts had, so on and so forth. That's what we're paying to school resource officers. I myself started calling districts. I talked to many superintendents, many. Safety leaders throughout surrounding districts, anywhere from here on valley to Fowlerville, Kinkney. And everything in between. I do have to say that I am a bit. I probably share a little bit of a story. I, my family had the opportunity to live in a district for a year. That had school resource officers and they were shared and they were armed in every building. And while it it was so much more than protection, these individuals developed relationships with kids. These individuals. Really created a sense of structure and security for even some of our our most troubled kids to understand that they needed a mentor. They needed someone who they could look up to. They needed someone sometimes to just share things with. And so. It's something that I've been personally uber passionate about. And want to bring it forward to discussion. I understand that it's going to take, it may take more than one meeting to discuss this. And likely come and I may vote. We have a a couple of options here and. We have a surrounding district that obviously uses a third party. They use ex-military and ex-police that are also trained in various CPR and things like that. We also have the wonderful Livingston County Sheriff Resource. We don't have city police, so we're a little bit hamstrung between either a mixture of both or one or the other. So really, from an incremental cost standpoint, we're looking at, and this is just strictly incremental options ranging from. An incremental two hundred fifty thousand dollars all the way to over seven hundred thousand, and that would be with full sheriff resource. And so. Really wanted to start this discussion. I get that this discussion is gonna take some time, especially with what we look at. We know where. Our higher, you know, you look at farms, Ford Creek, and the high school is probably the highest risk yet. I don't want to forget about all the elementary schools. And certainly all the children in those buildings. And so that's kind of where I'm from, is is how do we resource this in the most physically responsible way, all the while? Ensuring that our district still remains safe with this presence. And so I. Am more than happy to share this, and I apologize, I read in Excel for the board meeting and shared it with them. As it pertains to really just five different options, and like I said, ranging from from A to Z. On what we could do with this and and certainly come with some level of of agreement, hopefully by May. But wanted to get it in front of everyone, so you can see the price tag. It's a little bit of sticker shock at first, Rachel, I'm really sorry. But I think that it would really do our district well, and and the reality is 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 that there is correct in saying that other districts are doing this in the surrounding districts. Our resource appropriately, you know, some shared campuses have a shared resource, but nonetheless. The majority of them have either support from county sheriff plus city plus a company and or a make sure of there in between. So I would like to bring this forward to discussion. I'm happy to do any additional research anyone needs. The the company that is quoted on here is a is a company that Brighton uses. And has had a lot of really great success with. I did speak to. Fowlerville, I think, and they had a poor experience with the company. And so we do need to take that into consideration. Whatever we do. Decide to do, we need to make sure that we are able to pick those individuals that are right fit. They're gonna be right by our kids. And that they're gonna be there to not only provide them safety, but also mentor and do those types of things. That's what resource officers do. So that's my ten thousand book you on this one, but open to any discussion. And please, if anyone in the community has any questions. Given that we're gonna kind of probably discuss this more than once, please send them my way. I'm happy to share this Excel file. I'm happy to be transparent with what the cost looks like and what those incremental costs would look like for the district.
Thank you, Megan. I'm glad to see that, you know, you've taken this issue, done some research, worked with Mr. Hughes to. Put a solution in front of the board that we can discuss to to do something for safety. So thank you very much for taking the time to do that. And I I agree, I think this would be a great option, and I know you provided the board with several options. Moving forward, but I agree, I think. We probably need to think about putting this on the agenda, maybe even for a discussion, I haven't got next one, but. At least not being an action item until we know the results of the May election.
Yeah, I think if 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 we do, if there are budget cuts that come, and we have to sit down as a board and understand right that calls. If, you know, it might not be the, you know, seven hundred thousand dollar option we go with. We might have to go with an in-between model. And so. I would also probably recommend that we do not vote on this until, I mean, that we understand what our budget, right? Our future budget looks like to understand, you know, how we can go with this. In reviewing the financials of Rachel. We do, we're very solid financially as a district, and when you look at our audit reports. You know, we we have cushion, not too much cushion, but I think enough to support this initiative. That would maintain fiscal responsibility throughout the district. And so that is something that, you know. I looked at the numbers, you know, so on and so forth, and I'm happy to dig into it with anyone that likes number crunching.
You, you did an impressive job, number crunching here. And I I told you before, I had my data posted notes, and when I saw yours, it's like, I'll go with Megan.
I I personally feel that, yeah, thank you, Megan, for taking the time to put together that. I printed it out. All different options and costs. And as far as school safety, like I know the communities come up, I don't think you're gonna find one that's gonna say that we're not in support of. School safety, and for that matter, if we have to to go this route of adding. This extra security, I am for when I'm for it. I know, like you presented the different options, whether it be sheriffs or use one of the parent security companies. But I do like the fact that we are gonna take our time on this, having the right individual in place is important. Being in a school that has had a a sheriff and also has had a a police officer from my community I'm in. The person matters. The person actually matters who's there to develop those relationships with those students. So I I think we need to take our time. Obviously, you know, we're talking about extending this for a couple meetings of discussion, but if we can. Kind of find like, what people are we gonna interview? Like, what are they gonna look like? I mean, it's, I think it's a path I'm willing to go for. But I I think it involves a lot of conversation with the companies. Who we, who they're gonna provide for us. By no means am I an expert, which is great. Sounds like, Megan, you wanna be? So I am one for four, as we just said, like I said, I think it's a great idea.
And I think I ambition this more of also a collaborative effort, but obviously, we have my camera at the high school and the team at the high school, but then. They can also get together and understand maybe where some of our vulnerabilities are in the district, understand. Just different things that perhaps I know I don't see sometimes all the time, just because that's not my my background or my brain. And so. Yeah.
I I also, if you don't mind me interjecting, President Costa. Do you mind me interjecting?
No.
I think also the thing that has to happen in our community, and this is the unfortunate piece, is we don't have, and I think we made it clear. We don't have a police unit in our township, in Heartland Township, where, well, Brighton has one, but. They don't service the Brighton Township Schools, Lakes and Taylor, or Farms on Taylor Road there. We have to do a better job with the public getting out to their townships as well to say. Will you start supporting monies that go into a fund that has resource officers in our schools where our kids go to school? Because what I understand, and I don't talk to all the townships, but I do talk with the Harlem Township, obviously, with partnership. And when they ask the public, do you want more police coverage, the the public says, yes. When they ask the public, do you want to pay for it, the public says, no. So I think that if this is a big issue, and we as a board, you as a board, make that determination, we're gonna go in. A certain direction, then I think this board has to be instrumental in getting out and talking to township officials as well. Whether it be Art Tyrone that comes here, Art Brighton, Art Genoa, right, that they also support this initiative and maybe. You know, help us with that initiative because a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar a year. Security detail for our schools. While safety is important, it is a big chunk of money, right? And so we have to work together. So that would be my piece to the public. Talking to the people within your township and for for our board, if you decide to go this way. We need to have those conversations with our surrounding municipalities to say, this is important to the kids of Heartland. You know, yes, we'll take on some of this cost, but it's it is a big cost. So and I don't take that lightly to say that. So just something to throw out there and to think about if you, if we move forward on this.
So I would like to make a couple of comments about this. So. We tried to get a safety committee. We're glad that it's happening. We're sorry that it had to happen on the backs of Glenn and Greg. Because this is what sparked this conversation, because this is what we wanted. So thank you, Glenn and Greg, for. To say that they appreciate it and this is good. So this is a positive thing. Then as far as safety is concerned. The 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 parents and the students and the community and the board, we all need to do this together. Because, you know, everybody's got ideas and things. So, you know, I'm interested in what, you know, people have to say about, you know, what they, what, how they see. Safety going. The other thing that I would like to add in is that psychological safety is is a huge thing for me. Because, you know, some of the things that I was pointing out and things that were happening, you know, psychological safety is creating an environment and a climate. Which all students feel, all students feel that they can be candid, where, you know, where interpersonal risks feel doable. Like speaking up with questions and concerns, half-baked ideas, and even to make mistakes. For the school community to thrive, students need to feel safe, to be creative and to share their ideas, ask questions. Learn from mistakes and take interpersonal risks. What we're seeing is student trauma happen underneath our noses. It's in, it's on our watch. So I'm really glad that we're we're stepping it up and we're gonna get the resource officers. I think safety. Needs to be more broad, not just physical safety, because there's definitely some psychological safety that we need to implement. In fact. I have here instructions for parents opting out of sex education, rote sex ed. And so it's a it's a whole file that that you can fill out, I'm sorry, not whole file. It's a it's a form that you fill out that says that you don't want your child to be talked to about anything sexual in nature. Sexual identity, anything like that. You have the right as a parent to make sure that the school knows where you stand. So. I have this if anybody wants a copy of it, you're, you know, you're more than welcome to it, and I think you should. But I also think that we should add psychological safety to this committee or whatever we're gonna be doing.
Thanks, Mrs. Bonde. So currently, item three A, school state, safety staff, we're talking about these additional. That's okay. So if there's no more discussion on the school safety staff.
One more thing, I'm sorry, Megan, you did a great job. Thank you so much. I was I was terrible without thinking that. I've been kind of negative and I apologize. It's been emotional. Thank you.
Again, Megan, thanks for putting all that effort into some options for the district to. Review and study. I know that takes a lot of work to do that, so it's much appreciated on behalf of the board and. Members of the community. I I guess personally, my my opinion is. Looking through the 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 security option or the third-party company, I do have some concerns with that. The cost per person came, struck me as being a little bit low. To be on par with what I would want to have as a. An officer in the in the district. So I guess I'm encouraged that. I I would be interested, I guess, to to hear a little bit more about. The 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 individuals that would potentially represent or provide security services. So that was. I guess maybe one little concern there, but otherwise, again, thanks for what you put together. And I think, you know, just to kind of wrap it up into. A little bit of what Michelle jumped into with the safety committee, I think, you know. Part of one of the reasons why I had requested a safety committee is for things like this. To then have dialogue and then potentially make recommendations to the board. So again, Megan, thanks for your. Hard work on that.
Item three B, superintendent administrative safety committee. So Mr. Keller, this is, this is the one that. That you for brought forefront to, if you wanted to talk about what your vision is on this, item three B.
Yep, so I know we talked a lot about safety tonight, so it doesn't end yet. But again, concerns amongst the community that we continue to hear. And so I guess my, what I wanted to propose is that we. Formally adopt an actual safety committee as opposed to. I'll call it a subcommittee within an existing committee or framework that we currently have. There was a proposal made, I think. That this would be put inside the actual building committee, which. I I think there are aspects of the the building that would, you know, be appropriate to include safety for, such as, you know, bathrooms and locks and things like that. But I think the the spirit of safety in a committee is a lot broader than just the building. And so some of the ideas that I think we should include or look at. Would be discipline or behavioral. I think we want to look at curriculum, although we have a curriculum committee, there may be. Safety aspects of curriculum that potentially we we would want to incorporate. Data or cybersecurity as a district, we want to make sure that. You know, we're not so big to any potential cyber attacks, things like that. Health would be another one where we want to make sure that the committee is taking a look at those again. Not to bring out old wounds, but things like masking and, you know, other potential recommendations for. Help procedures, I guess. Visitors, we talked about that already today. I think a visitor policy would would be appropriate to include in. Safety committee type discussions. It was a mention of bus drivers earlier today. Um, it was mentioned the bus drivers earlier today. Um, so I think that would be another one. Transportation would be an item where. We want to make sure that we're getting the kids to school in the most safe and effective means at the um most reasonable cost as well. And then, you know, also just looking at food is, um. You know, obviously, we have teams that are already looking at what, what kind of. Meals that that the kids eat in schools today, and I think we do a good job, but I want to make sure that it continually stays in focus. Um, on, on our team here. And so some of the items that I think we would also. Uh, want to include or at least review in, in the safety committee, if we don't bring them to the board, I would want the committee to at least be reviewing these. Some examples of those would be like the okay to say reports, the anonymous tips that come into the district. We don't necessarily hear about those. Um, unless someone happens to have a police report. Uh, threat assessments, again, we heard a little bit about those today. I I'd like to see a little bit more. Openness and transparency with how we receive those and make sure that as a board and as administration that we. Are really taking action on those. Um, any res- um, resource officer reports that may be issued, would like visibility to those. I I have yet to see one as a board member. Um. Emergency drill results, I know those are posted on our website, but I, again, I I'd like to see that be kind of standard cadence. For the board to get some information on that. Um, suggestions from our staff and parents as well, if they have a concern, I almost Jerry Bogaleski personally gave about his. Email address if someone has concerns, but I think, you know, we'd like to have some uh mechanism to, to handle those. And I think there's some concerns necessarily with um disciplinary actions that. I would say maybe there's a specific threshold that exceeds, then, you know, that, um. There's some board awareness, or at least at the subcommittee level, I, I guess one of the things I know I've talked with some of you about is there's. A gap, right? If, if, if in the event there is need to expel a student. It doesn't, if it doesn't make it to the board, we can't take action, and and maybe we may not all agree what the right route is, but I think. Uh, there's times where it should make its way to the board, but it's not. And so I think having that visibility would be helpful. Um, and then I think the last one is uh FOIA requests. I think I'd like to understand or make the, have the board be aware of any FOIA requests that are made by individuals in the district and making sure. That if they are rejected, it's for appropriate means. Um, so, so those are some of the kind of the things that I'd like to, um, have the safety committee be a part of.
I'd also like to add to that, to training and making sure that, um. Training is done on a regular basis, that we have a, um, sort of a. Rotating schedule for training and having key people set aside for safety and such. Um, Al's training, that kind of thing.
I just have two things. Um, I'd like to better understand how this committee will interact with the other committees that already exist, because. There are, it's, it's building in sight. I would like to see that bi-directional communication. I don't want to see it sitting in safety committee when really it belongs, you know. Bi-directionally, and so I would like to, to understand how that would go. And then, given that you guys, I think on the twentieth, our meeting with the admin. I think it would be great to get their feedback about, you know, boots on the ground, where our gaps are, where our vulnerabilities are, what they'd like to see perhaps out of this safety committee. What they'd like to see as a structure, um, and and get their feedback on, on perhaps what they may need, um, you know. In, in the schools each and every day.
Well, I, I I personally think a lot of the points that Mr. Keller mentioned are valid. He's got some valid questions and concerns. I'm just, I'm wondering if. Creating a board-level safety committee, which we talked about at the last meeting or was prior meeting, and how we, we, we hammered home to the public that those are informational. We're not making decisions. I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if time is better spent. Such as, I know you mentioned that three of you are sitting down with Mr. Hughes and his team to address some of those issues. Because my, my concern would be like, so, so we made the safety committee. So it's got all these overarching questions that are being asked, and Mrs. Claylock kind of made a point, well. Is that part of building in sight, like, should building in sight now? I'm just wondering if. Three of us sitting down periodically, is it going to add anymore as opposed to? If, that's just saying, for example, the limit site, if we made a building in sight and safety, then specific questions. About safety, about buildings would could come out, but I would, I would, I would be, I'm not opposed to that, but I would be more inclined to. Like what yourself and this is one deal, Mr. Golewski are doing, where the three of you are taking the time out of your day to sit down and say. I want to know, like, what, what's happening here? I, I think that would be more beneficial to a lot of the points you made, Mr. Keller. Um, only because I think. Like I said, a lot of those things that I think you mentioned have a lot of validity. I just don't know if they, they all would fit under one umbrella. So I. For my, for my words' worth, I, I think, I think it's up for a little more discussion. So.
I would just like to add that, um, I understand. It does sound like there's a lot, and how do we gather, you know, how do we get it all together and everybody agree on everything? I think there's some good policies in place, might be just enforcement of some of them, or equal enforcement of some of them. You know, so, so, yeah, I mean, people need to review, you know, for their, for their own self to understand, like, what we're going to do. But like, the community or the parents, you know, want to understand as well. And so that's why I feel like if we made a joint uh effort. Um, that, and we created a, a safety committee, then we can have the people that are currently involved in safety in the schools join forces. With parents. It doesn't have to be separate. And they, and then maybe they can explain to the parents, and the parents will be like, got it, perfect, we're done, like, it's good. Because, you know, it's, I believe that a lot of the, um. I, I don't know, I, 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 you know, I go over this in my head all the time. Why is it so contentious? Why is everything so difficult? Why is everything so this, so that? And I think a lot of it has to do with understanding and knowledge, agree, but there are some things that are not getting to the public that should. Hence Greg and Glenn's uh podcast, so that's the last thing.
Can you no more discussion?
I, I, yeah, no, it's fine. I just, I'll add that, um, I do agree that. Um, a safety committee could definitely be beneficial. I just, I have. I can't wrap my head around yet exactly how all of those categories could, could be addressed and and be addressed efficiently. So I guess I would be interested in more, in understanding how, how you would use the time. Or how you would staff the committee to be able to address that wide gamut of, of issues. That's, that's what I can, that's where I'm struggling.
You know more discussion? Item for a future meetings, uh, April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Are you the meeting six thirty right here in the boardroom? Also, May eighth, regular meeting six thirty here in the boardroom. Informational items, or P.
Uh, just youth appreciation is on the twenty-first of March. Um, that's where we uh honor our outstanding youth in the community. Um, if you're born that day at six thirty, it's here in the auditorium. Um, you know, get to hear about some awesome things that a lot of kiddos are doing in our community.
Thank you, Mrs. Claylock. March twenty-first.
March twenty-first. Um, the reception starts at six, and then the, um. No more, try it, six thirty.
Thank you. We are adjourned.